All right. We will bring this special meeting of the city commission to order. This is Tuesday, January the 30th. If you'd please silence your cell phones. Give the sound guy a minute to work out the key. Can everybody hear me? Okay, is it too loud? Not loud enough? I'm getting a lot of thumbs up out there. What about the commission? Is it, how's it for you all? I feel like I'm getting some feedback, but, all right. So if you would, please silence your cell phones. And city clerk, if you would, take the role, please.
Mayor Owen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Claudio.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So this is a special meeting. We have four or so topics to go through. Quite a diverse agenda tonight. But as with all our meetings, first item up is public participation. So this is your chance to address the city commission. I'd be honored if you'd keep it to items that are on this agenda, since it is kind of a special agenda. But really, it's your time to speak to us about anything that was on your mind particularly. You will have three minutes. There's a timer just to your right. If you see me pointing like this, it means you're almost out of time or out of time. Please don't make me be the bad guy. And with that, this is your chance, public participation. Come forward if you'd like to speak. Just approach the mic. It's first come, first served. If you see somebody else moving. All right. Yes, ma'am. If you just give your name and address for the record. This is a group presentation, all right.
Do you need all of us?
I actually have, oh my goodness, okay. I actually have a three-minute speech. It's like drinking from a fire hose, but I have some helpers first. May I take this out? Maybe not.
Yeah, may not. There you go.
Okay, I'm going to turn my back to you, please. Do you want to turn around so the commissioners can see, please? Okay. My name is Kathy Healy. I'm president of the New Smyrna Beach Garden Club. I literally picked this sign up yesterday, and I got the awards that go with it yesterday as well. And frankly, given the pandemic, good news needs to be shared. The New Smyrna Beach Garden Club is Garden Club of the Year in the state of Florida and in the deep south region, which is of six states. Our membership is open to all. If you'd like to join us, please download an application on the website. If gardening is not your thing, rejoice and be glad anyway, because we are your garden club, and that's good news. So, please join me in that. Okay. Thank you for that, I appreciate it. Lot of hard work went into that award. Pretty impressive.
So, if you would now, just if you could address the commission, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We were founded in 1929. Members met in homes until in 1987. Mr. John DeBerry, local banker, donated $387,000 to build the current clubhouse at 2,000 Turnbull Bay Road in memory of his wife Eva. At that time, Bill Gillespie was instrumental in gaining us a 50-year lease with the city for the land of New Smyrna. In the years that followed, additions to the gazoo included, to the grounds included, the Dotty Bowl Gazoo, a butterfly garden, a wildflower garden, and a walkway with bricks donated commemorating past members and friends of the club. In 1936, we began an affiliation with the Florida Federation of Garden Clubs, and that extended our environmental and educational mission statewide to include restoring coral reefs, planting native pines, lobbying for clean water legislation, and developing roadside flower beds. To support our activities and our annual $28,000 expenses, we run two fundraisers. Festival of Trees began in 1995, and the rummage sale each spring provides fiscal support as well as donations to local charities and the Humane Society. Fun fact, 830 volunteer hours this past February, and 67 volunteers got it done. In addition, bimonthly, we meet with a group called Flower Power that meets year-round, and we weed, mulch, and trim from 7:30 to 9:00. You can join us for that, too. Traditional garden club activities continue. We had our first flower show in 1955, continuing through to this past March when we had a mock flower show that was open to the public from 1:00 to 4:00. Currently, we have master gardeners, we have floral designers, we hold craft workshops and environmental studies. Over 100 members support. These are top 10 activities that we do offer to the community. Scholarship elementary students to Camp Okeiva, high school students to SEEK, which is Save the Environment Through Education and Knowledge, high school academic scholarships to those students going on in agriculture, weather, or other related topics. Garden of the Month signs, which I know you've seen throughout the county.
Okay, I'm gonna have to, time is up.
Okay.
I appreciate, is that the same thing? I think you sent something to us, right?
Yes, I did.
All right, I think, so for the commission, I think you've got that as well. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
He's got you out. All right, anyone else wish to address the commission? Come ahead. Yes, sir. And we'll just leave the mic in from now on. Thank you.
Joe Dlubak, 3587 Casalta Circle. There's two comments regarding the charter to be reviewed tonight. Applaud the inclusion of the annual performance review of the charter members, and expect that the dates of said review and public exposure will be covered in the accompanying ordinances. Secondly, my scan this afternoon, I did not see the equivalent of a probationary period for any of the charter members. I believe it was in there initially for six months. I, having been exposed to programs within the Navy, would suggest that that probationary period should be extended to 12 months, so that you can go through the entire fiscal cycle to evaluate performance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Yes. Go ahead, you got one behind you, and then you can go next. Come ahead. Just give your name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Janet Lyons, and I live at 1808 North Indian River Road. I'm a boat and ski club member for many, many decades, and I offer input on the issue of city leases renewals and revisions. It's a privilege to speak with you. I thank you. Please consider the benefits beyond monetary gain as you look at city leases. I suggest you make no changes to current leases and write in changes for land never before leased. Leases of city-owned property to community organizations create benefit for cities. Our city commission puts itself in good company with fine cities when it helps non-government, community-minded organizations. It is not a sweetheart deal. It is a smart deal when you help grassroots outfits sustain and improve the people and activities of our town. It is in the best interest of towns to see civic and recreation clubs thrive. One of those thriving groups is this 60-year-old New Smyrna Beach Boat and Ski Club. I ask you to look out the window and ski the river in that small boat and ski club right over there on the north causeway. 60 years ago, the members built that place block by block, and this year, a fourth-generation boat and ski club member was born. A low rent and long-term lease help keep dues affordable and predictable for families. We are a folding-chair club where families don't need a fat wallet or a fancy address to meet friends in a waterfront setting. The club is where we hand down boating education and the lore of good times on this river. Save the charm. Beyond church and school, how many New Smyrna Beach traditions have lasted 60 years? Or maybe I should say church, school, and the DQ, I'm not sure. Boat and ski and safari clubs are longtime nonprofits that have proven their staying power as part of the fabric of the town, and they're open to all, not just a single individual or a tiny group. With high rent and a short lease, the club would suffer, and it would be a real loss to the city's identity of outdoor family-friendly and water activities. Because of the club, relationships are built with friends and many nonprofits. Local nonprofits are strengthened because there is a place to hold education classes and fundraisers. The Boat and Ski Club has hosted safari clubs, Sea Scouts, Power Squadron, and many, many other local nonprofits. As you review city leases, I urge you to consider non-monetary benefits provided from strong community organizations. Write new leases on terms for land that's never before been leased. And remember, the Boat and Ski Club pays 2,400 times more rent than many of your tenants.
Thank you. Come ahead. I've seen you try to get up three times now, so I'll invite you down. You, PJ, yes, you.
Good evening. Pat Harbison, First Vice President, Garden Club. I just want to pick off, pick up where Kathy left off and where the Boat and Ski Club lady left off. I want to also emphasize what we do for the community. And again, like I said, pick up what Kathy left off. Camp Okeiva, SEEK, college academic scholarships, Garden of the Month, 36-bed community garden on Mary Avenue, Monarch Butterfly Gardens, Arbor Day, Advent Health Oncology Ward. We send out a flower arrangement every month. Gifts of Love, a food pantry in Hetero. We support that. Habitat for Humanity, Marine Discovery Center, penny pines, coral reefs, and plenty of gardening classes. And like she said, we have the Festival of the Trees to help raise money. We have our rummage sale, which we give back into the community through our donations. We were not able to provide that level of community participation if our lease is not honored. Our lease comes up in 2034, so we're very concerned about what might happen tonight with the lease agreement. And instead of giving leases out nilly-willy to help somebody with the business or to help somebody with a pet project, we've been here 90 years. 30 years longer than Boat and Ski Club. We're here to stay, and we want to stay. We want to participate in the community. Thank you.
I'll be short and sweet. My name is Mary Silver. I live at 2636 Sunset Drive, and I'm one of the houses that's scheduled to be elevated. And I just wanted to thank Khalid and Kyle, Jessie, David, and Leila especially, for all the work they've put into this project. And I wanted to urge you to please continue your support. There's a lot going on, and I was just so thrilled to see it on the agenda that I came out tonight. This is my first time out since March, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Any others for public participation?
Tricia Tudeen, 2409 Saxon Drive, former member of the Charter Review Committee, which I think this is the last time that you guys are going to touch on it. So I just wanted to say thank you for everybody that you, I should reiterate, because I get lost. I just want to express my appreciation to the commissioners and the city attorney for being faithful to the work that we have already done. I enjoyed y'alls back and forth on some of the issues that we went back and forth on, and I appreciated that ultimately you guys decided to side with what the committee had ultimately decided, especially keeping Section 6, which you guys know I'm pretty passionate about, intact. And, yeah, I just think there was, you guys made really great appointments, we worked really well together, and I think we put out a good product, and we appreciate that, or I appreciated that you guys voted for it to be a one vote on the ballot. I think that's really important, so, thank you for all the work that you continue to do on the charter.
Thank you. And thanks for serving in that committee. Any others for public participation? Yes, sir. It's so weird because you don't recognize people, like it takes another few seconds to recognize people.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and City Staff. I'm Mike Lyons. My address is 1808 North Indian River Road, New Smyrna Beach. That's 1808 Indian River, North Indian River Road. I'm currently the president-elect of the Southeast Volusia Chamber of Commerce, and I urge the city to take a long look at the history of these individual properties. That history goes back decades, and some of those properties may be restricted in the city's ability to negotiate by deed restrictions and grant funding. So I encourage the city staff to take a hard look at those items before pressing forward with any specific negotiations. These organizations provide the real fabric of the community. While maybe not a direct monetary benefit, there is some monetary benefit to the city. As you've heard from the other participants this evening, the real crux is the history of these organizations. They've proven themselves over decades of community involvement. And being that real fabric of the community adds value to the community, that is not a direct monetary payment. Some leases, including the Chamber of Commerce's lease, has very specific and express things that the chamber does to benefit the city that's not a direct monetary payment. Those things, along with other just general community-minded organizations, don't benefit any specific individuals. They really build on the community as a whole, and they, those organizations continue to add value to the community that may not be a direct monetary benefit. So I encourage the commission and the city staff to take a look at the value that these leases provide, whether or not it is directly monetary. And I also encourage the commission and the staff to take a look at market value. So when we're talking about city leases, some of them may be commercial and for-profit. Many of these are nonprofit. Some of these buildings are decades or, in the chamber, since, over 100 years old. That market value, be it a lack of parking from some properties, non-ADA compliance for other properties, and no heat and AC in other properties, those all affect the market value. So if we're gonna, if the city gets into a market value debate, that also should be considered in what the lease negotiations come down to. But I encourage the city to take a look at the history, make sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is dotted with those restrictions that may be out there, and consider the value added to the community when entering into renewals or new leases. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and others on the dais. My name is Cynthia Slater. My address is 815 South Cardinal Circle, Daytona Beach, and I serve as president of the Volusia County NAACP. The Southeast Volusia County NAACP of New Smyrna is our sister branch. Our mission is to secure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights in order to eliminate race-based discrimination and ensure the health and well-being of all persons. The vision of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People is to ensure a society in which all individuals have rights without discrimination based on race. Although I do not live in New Smyrna, as president of the Volusia County Branch, I am charged with addressing an issue that I have received several calls from media about regarding one of your lease from, of the Anglers Club, which operates on city property and has operated on said property since the 1940s at the rate of $25 a year. I've done some research on this issue and the allegations for which this club operates that is being accused of racial, gender, and religious discrimination should not be proffered a gift as this, using taxpayers' dollars for which certain groups or classes are excluded. It is estimated that the property for which this club operates is worth over $2 million. And in today's real estate market, the city or governmental agency will continue to accept a $25 annual lease to a club that discriminates or so-called discriminate, let alone undermine taxpayers in this city. It is unfair to the citizens of New Smyrna Beach. Would you sign a contract today to an organization to use any property, and this is beautiful property, for $25 a year? To that end, I'm asking this commission to renegotiate this lease with Anglers Club as if the, and if the lease is renegotiated, that the lease agreement is at a cost that is equal to today's market price. Additionally, if the lease is renegotiated, that the Anglers Club end their discriminatory practices. This would be in the best interest of all residents of this beautiful city named New Smyrna Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Hello. Hello, everyone. We're both short. My name is Shaw Morris. I live at 541 Washington Street. I'm here today to say thank you for all of your support for the peaceful protests. I'm one of four lead organizers, and we've been meeting consistently for the past four weeks peacefully at the corner of Old Mission Drive and State Road 44 every Sunday from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. Last week took a different turn. I received a lot of phone calls and text messages and screenshots from different, various people in the community, which I really appreciated, concerned about our well-being, being out there to protest, that there were people organizing a counter-rally or anti-rally against what we were doing. So Mayor, Chief Coffin, I appreciate Captain Claudio and Lieutenant Servitz giving me a personal call and making me aware of what was going on. Also, on Sunday, we arrived, and a few of the people tried to go through the protest area, and the Smyrna Beach Police Department definitely helped us and made sure that our perimeters were secure and safe. But what I noticed was there were a lot of officers out there, probably about 15 to 17 officers. So with the holiday weekend coming up, next weekend, this weekend is 4th of July, we were thinking about pulling back from State Road 44 with your permission to use Pettis Park and do a painting-for-peace party. In the past, every third Saturday, I would have a painting-for-peace party. The first one started with Chief Coffin and his officers after the brutal murder of Orlando Castile on Live Facebook. I think the park is large enough for us to have social distancing. We can also have a space to educate the peaceful protesters on how to peaceful protest and not engage as we move forward, because I'm not sure if it's always going to be a counter-protest or anti-rally at the same time, at the same place, which I thought was very ironic, being that we have so many days of the week, so many hours of the day, you pick the same day and same time. So my main concern is definitely safety for anybody that's participating in any of the programs that I'm involved with. So I would love to be able to use Pettis to do a painting-for-peace party. And what we would do, we'll use recycled campaign signs, give people various things that they can write, so our messaging is clear, and also have an educational program about peaceful protesting, what we expect, what we don't expect, and that way, we can remain peaceful on our end moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wish to speak? Someone waving back there? All right. If you're not coming forward, I'm assuming no one else wishes to speak. All right. I saw waving, but I don't know what that means, so I'm gonna assume that no one back there wants to speak. So we will close public participation. Thank you all for taking the time to come out and share those views and thoughts, and we'll get to many of these items tonight. And congrats to the Garden Club. It's a great, great award to win, Garden Club of the Year, right? That was it? Fantastic. All right. First item up, Kyle, I believe, has a report, or maybe Khalid is gonna kick it off with the approval of Pegasus Engineering for a contract relating to some engineering services.
Yes. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Prior to introducing our consultant, I just want to go over the four key objectives associated with the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. First of all, you know, tonight, we want to update and provide an overview of all three HMGP projects and get into some of the details associated with the commitment of each of the three cases. The second item is to approve three post-award contracts with Pegasus Engineering. The first, $34,000 to elevate nine homes. The second, $21,500 to elevate an additional four homes. The third contract is $125,000 to demolish and rebuild 17 single-family homes. The third item involves the commission's acknowledgement and action to dedicate up to 12.5% of the project cost for each property at a cost not to exceed $35,000 for each property. This will require a motion and a vote by commission tonight as well. The fourth item is to amend Pegasus Engineering Continuing Contract to reflect the requirements of FEMA associated with the two CFR 200 guidelines, and this will be further explained in the PowerPoint presentation. But what this does, it allows all their post-award contracts to be 100% reimbursable through the SRMC program. So with that, I'll introduce David Hamster with Pegasus Engineering. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff. David Hamster with Pegasus Engineering. With me tonight is Laila Sivedra to assist me with any questions we may have. As Kyle had mentioned, we have a lot of different topics related, so with your permission, we can either stop the main issues or just go to the very end and take questions, but I'll defer to you.
Go through it all, and we'll jump in.
Okay. First and foremost, this is a federal emergency management program. They're the ones that allocate the dollars to Florida, which are then dictated and administered by the Florida Department of Environmental Emergency Management. We submit the applications, the DEM, they review it. We go back and forth with all the questions they may have, whether it's environmental, programmatic, engineering. Once the issues have been resolved, they then make a recommendation or a denial. In the case of New Smyrna Beach, they recommended, for example, the one we'll talk about further in detail, which is the nine homes. It goes back to FEMA for FEMA's blessing to make sure that they agree with the state's determination that the project is cost-effective. Once they approve it, it goes back to the state. The state drafts up an agreement, and I believe that's what you signed or approved two weeks ago, was your first agreement with the state for the nine-home elevation. At this point, it goes to the city of New Smyrna Beach to administer the contract from start to finish. For our flood mitigation projects, there are two elements that will be embarked by the city. One, 13 homes will be what they call elevation, house lifting, home lifting, you'll hear a bunch of different terminology. It's basically physically lifting the structure from the ground, a certain distance above ground, to be above the flood, 100-year flood elevation, and a couple more feet above that to account for sea level rise. One thing I would like to point out that's been brought up a couple times with some of the homeowners is, once the home is elevated, it will be created about eight or nine feet of space underneath the house that's been elevated. It can only be used for parking or temporary storage. It cannot be reoccupied for living space. That is a condition to the permits. You're gonna, we'll have flood vents and things like that for that water to occupy that area, but the walls cannot be sealed out and rented for an apartment in the future. The other 17 homes will be demolished, the site will be regraded, and the home will be reconstructed. And one thing I would like to point out under this particular program, we cannot add architectural features that are not there today. For example, if you have a two-car garage, you can't get a three-car garage. If you have a single-story house, you can't get a split-level house. It's within 10% of the square footage you have now when it gets reconstructed. Now, this is the breakdown of the three hazard mitigation agreements that were submitted and currently under review at this point with the state and FEMA. The first one is the nine-home elevation, based on the category of pre-calculated benefits. What that means is the average price of that group or category was below FEMA's threshold, so they got expedited or approved quicker than the other two categories, because we had to demonstrate to FEMA it was cost-effective for federal dollars you spent towards those other, the four homes or the 17 homes. So, as typical, the pre-calculated got approved, and that's what was agreed upon and sent to Tallahassee a couple weeks ago. Within the 30 homes, we have five within Isleboro. It may be hard to see, but it's got the little yellow asterisk next to the names. There's one within the Bonavista Shores, and the other 24 homes are within the Central And this is a map showing the, this slide takes a lot of load up, sorry. So we color-coded, the ones in red are the nine homes to be elevated, based on the pre-calculated benefits. The green ones are the 17 homes that are being reconstructed, and the remaining four homes are the elevations as well. But you'll see the Isleboro area to the left and the Central Beach area to your right on the screen, and that those homes currently under consideration. Now, there are mult... under consideration. Now, there are multiple steps that we got from Irma from two thousand and seventeen to the present. As you may recall, August of two thousand and eighteen was the city's first submittal to the state. We had, I think, over that time, more than thirty homes that were agreeable and participating. If you remember, they denied the applications primarily because they would not acknowledge sea level rise coming from the ocean through the inlet and up into the Cala Lisa Creek and Turnbull Bay area. So we had to stop, hire a local surveyor, install some gauges to prove to them, as the tide goes up and down the ocean, so is the water level within these water bodies that were affected. FEMA finally blessed it, got the projects on board, so we resubmitted the three packages now in May of two thousand and nineteen, just roughly over a year ago. So again, you'll see the three categories, the nine-home elevation, the four-home elevation, and the seventeen-home demo reconstruction. We have submitted in May two thousand and nineteen. We've addressed all the comments from the reviewers, which is step two. They've been processed by DEM and given to FEMA, which is step three. FEMA is currently reviewing the remaining two of the three. It's still on their lap up in EPA Region Four. And the nine-home buyout is now going to, agreement was given to the city, which has been signed and returned back to the state. And now we're in the process of actually putting an RFP in the street to solicit a contractor to get on board or contractors to do the work for the city and the homeowners. This slide has a lot of information. It's basically a nice fact sheet for you to move coming forward. It has the three categories and the three applications. The far left is the nine-home, the four homes in the middle, and the seventeen demo reconstruction. The agreements in yellow, where they stand today. Again, one has been received. The other two are still not being issued yet. You got FEMA's number, which we'll have to keep throughout the entire process, which will aid in the reimbursement and reporting. All right. The big one is the preliminary total cost. You'll see the nine-home is one point six million roughly, the four-home is eight hundred thousand, and the seventeen-home is three point eight million dollars. Let me stress, these are preliminary costs. These are done over a year ago based on the current dollars per square foot numbers that are available. I can't tell you, standing here with COVID-19 and the job market, that things will go down or go up by the time this gets billed, but these are preliminary and subject to change based on when we actually receive the bids from the qualified contractor. Below that, we have FEMA's match. This is their contribution at the end of the day that the city will be reimbursed. For the first two projects, the nine-home and the four-home, their match is seventy-five percent, which is typical. For the seventeen-home reconstruction, the match in Eppetaker program is sixty-seven percent, and I'll get into the reasons why on that category. We have the homeowner's match, second from the bottom, and then we have the city's match. And again, this is predicated on the twenty-five percent match, or in the case of seventeen-home reconstruction, that match got a little bit larger because of the amount of work being done, and FEMA's cap to implement the program. So the first item that Kyle had brought forward to your attention for consideration tonight is the contribution by the city of New Smyrna Beach to help offset the cost by the homeowners. Based on the pie chart that you see, typically FEMA pays up to not seventy-five percent of the cost of the project. The remaining twenty-five percent is considered a local match. That could be distributed many different ways. In the case of New Smyrna Beach, roughly about a year ago, maybe longer, it was brought forth that the city would participate half of that twenty-five percent slice of the pie, or twelve and a half percent. But we did recommend a cap, or the city recommended a cap on that twelve and a half percent match to make sure it didn't go well beyond a certain number. So that number was capped at thirty-five thousand would be the city's maximum contribution to a single homeowner if it got that high. If it got forty or fifty thousand dollars, it would be capped at not to exceed thirty-five thousand. Otherwise, the city's match is twelve and a half percent of the twenty-five percent local match. What's in yellow is the reasons why the seventeen-home demo reconstruction, FEMA only paid up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Anything over that makes that twenty-five percent grow larger based on the value of your home. So this topic of the city participating with the homeowner was brought up on four different occasions. I brought it up in January ninth, two thousand and eighteen during a city commission meeting. We then did our second of many public meetings at the community center on January twenty-fifth. And then in this very room over a year ago, I presented through the resiliency program, which we also presented the idea of the city's participation of the twenty-five percent match, or the half of the twenty-five percent match. And then again, in April of last, or two years ago, that was discussed. So again, we have the preliminary costs and the city's match for each of those categories. Again, not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars for the more expensive rebuilds or elevation projects. So the first thing on tonight's agenda for consideration for the city commission is to recommend the city commission consider a formal vote tonight with regards to the city's commitment to fund twelve and a percent of the local match, but not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars for each of the thirty homes. And whether you want to do that now or at the end, I'll leave that to you, Mayor. All right. So let's focus now on the nine-home elevation program, which is what we have the agreement for now. We have a period of performance end date of July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, not quite two years from now. We've laid out an anticipated schedule to advertise and secure bids for a qualified contract for the next three months, between July first and October first, to actually select the contractor and bring it forth for consideration and approval by the city commission. Then we're going to give the qualified contractor or contractors eighteen months in which they'll do the nine homes. And these contractors will be based on what we call turnkey services, planning, design, construction, and management from start to finish until the project is done. And then the city goes and does the inspections, and then we then coordinate with DEM to do the closeout. And then at that point, they come inspect themselves and make sure everything is compliant, and the full reimbursement is given to the city, and we've met our obligations. Now, there are rare instances where you can get an extension. It has to be an extraordinary event, like another hurricane or tropical storm. They may delay progress, but assuming ideal conditions, our current commitment and our commitment to the state is we're going to get this done in the next two years for those nine-home elevation program. So what's next for the city? For the nine-home and eventually the other two categories when the grants come in, is to advertise return key services or full services by qualified, certified contractors, to host an additional public meter, public meetings with the affected property owners, so they can ask questions directly of the contractor. For example, whose house is going to be done first? When can I move in? Who's been, if it rains, what assurances I have the house is going to be safe? All those questions, the contractor will address prior to and during construction. Also, I believe in July twenty-eighth, and also in the first meeting in August, we're going to present to the city commission funding alternatives to get money in place, to put the money up front to pay for the program. We, the city of New Smyrna Beach, had to pay for all these services upfront, and then we get reimbursed. So there has to be assurances by the state that the city has the financial wherewithal to fund the project upfront and again reimburse during construction. And then finally, the step forward is actually get the most responsible and responsive contractor and get them underweight to meet the contractual obligation. Now, the state and FEMA has what they call an advanced payments opportunity. If, for example, the state is falling a little bit shy of their money that's available to undertake the program, they do allow a one-time ask for each grant to get the money in advance and then pay them back within a certain amount of time. What you see in the left is the standard form that FEMA uses. When you make the request, it's got to be for the first time only, and it's only a one-time for each grant, but there's a catch, and that is the date of the agreement, whenever you get that back from Tallahassee, whether it's next week or this week, starts the ninety-day clock. And so whatever funds you expend in that ninety-day window is all that you can get reimbursed for ahead of time. So for example, if the nine-home elevation project is costing a total of one point five million dollars, and FEMA pays seventy-five percent of that, we can't really expend all seventy-five percent of the first ninety days. The contractor's not going to be that quick to get in there, elevate all the nine homes, and get all that money spent in that period of time. So even though they're offering that grant, we will do our very best to get the RFP in the street, get the contractor teed up, and make sure they can get started as soon as the agreement comes in, so we can maximize what we can get in advance during that ninety-day window. I'm not going to bore you with all this. This is language we put in the PowerPoint that I'm going to recommend at the city commission, gets included into the two CFR amendment to our contract. This is the language that FEMA requires, and it's the next three or four slides. It's basically procurement procedures, reporting procedures, accounting procedures that the federal government requires when you get a loan from the federal government. And it's a program that is required for all grant reimbursable expenses. It'll apply to the contractor, the archaeological, the architect, if there's one on board, and ourselves are doing these services. So the second recommendation for consideration tonight is to recommend the city county commission approve the specific language on those four slides, be amended to the current contract to make sure that our contract and the future of the contractors is fully reimbursable for the grant program. There's something called subrecipient management costs. I think it was Michael, that this is a new program where now the state and the federal government pay up to the five percent of the cost of the grant at a hundred percent to manage it from start to finish. So that application was required on June first. We quickly filled it out with Kyle's help and Jesse's help to fill it out. We got it submitted to the state in time, and they approved the subrecipient management costs for all three grants, meaning they'll pay up to a hundred percent of what you may approve tonight in our services to the city. And these are the forms that were submitted just for FYI. And I went through this quickly because I know you have a long night tonight, so I'll turn it over to questions.
All right. Thank you. For clarity, all of that we can get with the clerk input in the meeting minutes. I know we skimmed over a bunch of legalese right there at the end. So for those that want to read it, it will be in the meeting minutes. So a couple questions I had, and then we'll open up to the commission real quick. When you talk about the dollars upfront, you mentioned at one point, basically, we have to front that. And I know there's that whole provision, we can try to get the, you know, whatever we spend within ninety days. But is that the, we're floating the entire amount then? And then like the, let's take the big number, the three point eight million over there and that seventeen, in that case, we'd be floating that entire amount and then getting reimbursement?
So when that agreement gets approved, Mayor, and that may be in July or August, I don't know when it's going to get approved, but when that gets approved, it's the assumption that when this project starts, the city has those funding in place. And so the contractor will be selected, the work will be undertaken. You will commit to the state that you have the three point eight million dollars, for example, available. And then as you pay out to the contractor and other services during the course, you can quickly ask for reimbursements to start getting that money back. But yes, it is predicated in the fact that the city has that money available at the time the work actually starts.
All right. And so two more things. So when you say we'll quickly start getting reimbursed, I know with FEMA in the past, with other things, the word quickly, we have very different definitions of quickly, I believe. So is this a different channel from FEMA that is truly quickly, or are we potentially looking at, I know with other things, it was three or four years. So Kyle, do you want to talk about that?
If I may, because this is, it's an important topic. Obviously, we've worked so hard to get to this point. We have to have the money upfront in order for the project to proceed forward. So I've talked to our financial advisor today just to see what options do we have. So obviously, you could go into the city general reserve fund, which is not something that I would recommend at this point, especially with expecting hurricane season. And the other option is either to go with a bond or a line of credit. The bond, I don't think it's up to that level of the funding to go with a bond. So I was thinking of a line of credit. So I talked to Mark Galvin, and you probably met Mark previous when we did the Turnbull Creek. So to get line of credit, we need to get probably tonight, if the commission would authorize the staff to put an RFP, get some proposal. Doesn't mean that you have to go with it, but we get the proposals, and we get them back probably before the July twenty-eighth meeting, that we could present at that time just to give you an update of what happened from the proposals. And if you are okay with that, we could come back on August the eleventh with the full agenda item. Right now, the interest rate is about two percent. Now, with this program, the difference between this one and the FEMA in terms of the hurricane, that one, it took a long time. This one here, you submit your reimbursement request, and probably within a month to three months, you will get paid.
Okay.
So that's the difference between the hurricane reimbursement and this one.
Okay. So for whoever can answer it, can carrying cost, I mean, if we're going to the market now, I mean, it's de minimis, but now we have carrying cost. Is that, who pays that? Are we just stuck paying carrying cost on the capital, or?
If there's an interest to that, yes.
Okay. And then last thing is, there's no chance we get caught holding the bag on this, right? We have the contraction, I mean, they can't back out, or any, they being the FEMA, there's no chance that we get caught, we front of the money, and then all of a sudden, the program's changed, or some leadership has changed, or we didn't fill out some form the right way, and all of a sudden, now we're citizens of New Smyrna caught holding the bag on this. Is that?
Once the agreement is signed by both parties, both by you first and eventually the states, that's a binding contract. And I believe in the sixteen years we've been doing this, I've never seen anybody back out. Now, we've seen cities back out after they got the grants, for whatever reason, but no, I've never seen FEMA back out of a contract.
Okay. Other questions from the commission on this item? Comments, questions? We have two, two things. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
The thirty homes that are involved altogether, do these homeowners have the right to back out?
They can't back out. It will greatly complicate and delay the situation. We've had several back out during the application process for the last year and a half, for whatever personal reasons. They didn't have the money. They weren't willing to do the relocation. But at this point, that the contracts have been approved, if somebody's got to back out the eleventh hour, it just means us going back to the states and resubmitting all the paperwork and see if the project, the overall program is still cost-benefit, cost-effective. So it could jeopardize others depending on who drops out, but...
I've had three or continued meetings with these homeowners. I know it's hard to ask, but have they shown any inkling of doing that?
They've been shopping on the bid when they can get started, from the ones that Layla has talked to. They've been aware what's been going on. They've been communicating quite frequently with Layla, asking what's going on, what's the status. I don't believe any of them have indicated, correct me if I'm wrong, that they want to change their mind or get out of the program. So fingers crossed it stays that way at this point. We had maybe sixty people in the beginning. We ended with thirty at the end here, so...
Okay. It's, obviously, we can't force them to continue.
Correct.
We wouldn't want to, but that could cause some problems down the road.
Yes.
Okay. One way or the other, we would have to assume they're all going to join in, and we would still have to put all the money upfront.
Yes, sir.
Is the, because they're all, they're all ready to go, is there any chance that they could put their shares up now? That would equal the city share, so we would have to borrow less. Is there any way to accomplish that? It's probably not a question for you, but I'm just concerned about the overall impact to our budget and where we're going.
What was the question, Vice Mayor, again?
If the homeowners would pay sooner than later to help minimize our...
That's, that was my next question to the commission, because the options you have is either you pay the full amount upfront, and I'm talking about the homeowner, or they pay half, or they pay when the project is completed. Some homeowners have expressed, this is early in the process, that they might not have the full amount at the time when we start the project. So this is what we're going to discuss after he's finished with the commission, to see what the commission wants us to do. We are going to have a public meeting the week of the thirteenth with the thirty property owners.
The thirteen. The thirty, thirteen.
I realize that these homes are in a distressed area. There's over one million dollars that they would put up, assuming that was a minimum share of thirty-five thousand for them. And I just, I just hope they're, they have the ability to work with the program and not adversely affect their lives as well as how the city operates.
Agreed. Okay. So we have at least two items, and we've got a couple more to cover on this. So first, is there a motion to approve the post-award contracts and continued engineering services contract amendment? That's that stuff that you covered right there at the very end, that brings us into compliance with CFR 200 or whatever it was, I forget what that was.
CFR 200. Move to approve.
A motion, do I have a second on that?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I had a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second for that.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clodey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve? The next item is this point he's got on the screen here about the not to exceed $35,000. We've been operating on that, basically in principle, but as you heard from staff a few meetings back, basically, that just has never been formally codified, so that's kind of what we're doing tonight, but we certainly have been operating under that assumption. My only comment on that is, this clearly isn't a sustainable way to deal with sea level rise across the entire city. So I, those that got in on this program, I think, got in on a good thing, but it's just my only comment. Do I have a motion to approve the maximum city contribution of $35,000?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Prior to a motion, I'd like to make a comment and tack on to what you just said.
Sure.
Sir, does the scope of your work include surveying these areas that were flood prone, and to look at mitigating engineering to keep it from happening again?
All the homes, when we met two years ago after Irma, the city had surveyed almost every home that was flooded back in 2017. So we know the, what I call the finish wall elevation and the garage elevation, and how much they went underwater. That information was all part of the grant agreements, and then the elevation's got to be risen to, to meet the criteria, has also been improved by the city. So every homeowner we've talked to face to face when we had our one-on-one meetings, know if we're taking their house five, six, seven, eight feet above their existing location.
You work with FEMA, apparently, quite a bit. Do you know, have there been discussions ever in these type of repairs, what if it happens again? Are people allowed to do the same repairs? Rebuild, or?
If these homes flood, I think New Smyrna's gone, because they're building them eight feet off the ground, so.
Well, we probably have to vacate those properties at least.
Yeah, I mean FEMA, they have changed their methodology over the years. Instead of putting a lot of money in a lot of typical, maybe pumps, pipes type projects, when the home stays in the floodplain and doesn't get elevated, they have now been aggressively doing acquisitions to buy somebody off and put them on higher ground, or to physically elevate them out of harm's way. So this has been the new norm for the last, maybe ever since Sandy and a little bit before that, to stop fighting Mother Nature with trying to put dikes and berms and pumps in the ground. So this physical elevation, the mayor's right, I'll be leaving Florida if these houses go underwater after they're elevated eight or nine feet, but you can't say never, but we went a foot above the 100 here, and three more feet above that even, to counter sea level rise in the next 20 or 30 years. We believe, and I'm pretty confident, these 30 homeowners will be very comfortable moving forward.
These are the houses I'm evacuating to at this point. All right, do I have a motion to approve a maximum contribution threshold not to exceed $35,000 as presented by staff and a consultant?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, sure.
This contribution by the city of $35,000 to private homeowners to improve their properties is not something I would have approved if I was the commissioner at the time this project was set in. City has done an awful lot in preparing for these grants. I would not have offered the $35,000 myself. One philosophy I do have, though, is I believe that commissioners in the past have made decisions that they felt was in the best interest of the city, and I'm not going to second guess them. So as much as I, I would not have approved $35,000 to be spent on private property, that's $1 million of city funds, that could have been used for other, other things in this city. I will support it.
Can you go back one slide?
Please understand, Mayor, not every homeowner's getting $35,000.
Hang on, can you go back one slide for me?
Sure.
I think it's one slide, yeah. So Vice Mayor, I felt the exact same way, and then I saw that timeline, and I feel like there's dates missing before it, because January 19, 2018, nope, stay there. You and I were both up here talking about this, but I felt like there was other stuff before that, because it felt like, when it came to us at that meeting, it felt like this was kind of a done, done deal, but, because I tend to agree with you, but that timeline tells me, I don't know, that can't be the first time it was talked about, though.
No.
No, it's not.
It's not, right? Okay.
We talked before, before this commission, we talked.
All right, that's what I thought. Okay. So I'm with you, Vice Mayor, I'm kind of honoring what's been teed up by past commissions, because it would be unfair to pull the rug out, but I, I don't know, that's a lot of money. All right, had a motion and a second.
So to be clear, though, what we're committing to is 12.5% up to $35,000.
Correct.
So if there's some that are less than the 35, that's all we're paying. We're not giving everyone the full 35.
Correct.
So it's up to.
Yeah, this is, these are the maximum amounts, I think, over here, right? Yeah.
Just so that's clear.
Yes, thank you. All right, had a motion and a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Clodey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, that maximum contribution has been approved. Thank you all. The last item on that, I think, that was added is this notion of giving staff some direction on, do we establish a line of credit? I, yeah, there's no, this is way too short for bond, because we're going to pay it back so quickly, we'd get eaten up in cost of issuance cost. We should have a line of credit anyway for things like this, so I would support going to the market and establishing some line of credit. Any other comments, thoughts on that? Anybody object?
No, I agree.
Have a different idea? Okay.
And hopefully, we'll be back on the 28th, just to give you an update, and then on the 11th, we'll give you a full agenda item on that one.
Yeah. And just for what it's worth, when you do that, I would say, I wouldn't put a, I think this line of credit can just be for more than, you know, should be an open line of credit. We talked about this before, after hurricanes and different things, I just think having access to the market would be, would be helpful, so. All right, anything else on that?
I just, last question, I guess, our proposal to do the services, was that approved? Or, I know the contract was amended with the CFR 200, but I don't recall.
That was one of the items I had, is that something we need to approve?
The proposal?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Yeah, it was our first motion.
That was the, yeah, I mean, that was the motion to approve the Pegasus post-award contracts and contributing continuing engineering services contract amendment.
You approved the CFR 200 inclusion into the original contract. Now we need your voting on the three proposals, please, for post-award services.
Okay.
Which is different, yes.
The proposal was approved, the first one.
So that, that was for the CFR amendment?
The language is.
That was that specific.
But we have the three proposals to be approved for the engineering services, for the three category, which is the four homes, the nine homes, and the 17 homes.
Yeah. Okay, got it. You're okay with that? Everybody, staff's okay? All right, do I have a motion to approve those three proposals?
So moved.
The, assuming we develop a line of credit of a million and a half, how will that affect our budget for next year?
Well, if we, the only thing that's going to affect the budget is, it's coming out of stormwater funds, so hopefully, by the time that next year's budget would come, that this would be paid off, because we will be reimbursed by FEMA, and also by the homeowners at 12.5%. So the only thing that you will be paying is that, if you go back to the slide, and assuming, Vice Mayor, that these are estimated costs, so it's not a construction cost, so, but we're going to go with these numbers, up right there. So if you look at the first category, you have 195,000, and then the 104, and the 487, so the total number is 787,921. That's the city's share after everything is completed, and that will be paid out of the stormwater fund. So it should not affect the general fund at all.
And that's over between now and 2022?
Thank you.
I think, basically, in the short term, in this year's budget, we'll have a small carrying cost for that line of credit. 2% of, you know, we won't have to borrow the whole million upfront, we'll only draw down what we have, so, I mean, de minimis amounts of interest.
Correct. I'm not concerned about this year's budget, I'm concerned about next year's budget and the year after that.
Yeah.
Because with the lack of income that we're getting due to the virus, our budgets are going to be affected, and we might be cutting out a lot of things out of our budget. If it's stormwater fund, yes, we'll be cutting stormwater projects out. So we just have to be very careful when we get into the budgeting process.
We collect close to $2 million a year on the stormwater fund, so it will be affected from the stormwater side. But again, if you go out and you do a project such as this to alleviate flooding for 30 homes, that cost of the project, it's going to be above that budget.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry. As of today, though, we only have the first column actually been approved and in the process.
Correct.
So it's 100, what, 95,000?
Yeah.
So you, realistically, you don't know when FEMA or the state's going to finish with those other two projects, right? They're in the works, but.
It's on FEMA's desk, it could be a week or two months, but.
Right, okay. Could be any time.
Good, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for being here. All right, next item.
Sir, a motion.
Sorry, what was that?
Sir.
Oh, we never did, yeah, we never finished that, you're right. We had a motion and a second, right? And then he jumped in. All right, roll call, please, thank you.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clodey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item is approved, thank you. Next item, charter review discussion, city attorney, any comments?
The two remaining items that we have for charter review are, the first one is Section 6.04, which in the proposed charter dealt with the sale or lease of city lands. Based on our workshop on June 18th, I've come up with some language, a couple of different things for you guys to consider. I've also heard some comments since we've met at that time, so. The first thing is 6.04, sale or lease of significant public lands, any transfer of ownership or lease lasting longer than 10 years of the following environmentally, culturally, or historically significant lands owned by the city of New Smyrna Beach shall only occur if after a voter referendum, a majority vote of the registered voters in the city of New Smyrna Beach approves such a transfer of lease. If you like that language, we would need to insert a list of properties. Another option would be to try and describe those lands instead of having a list of properties. One example thrown out was landline contiguous to a named body of water, and referring it to a voter referendum. The other thing that has come up is whether it should be voter referendum or supermajority of the city commission. So I need direction on that particular item before we move on to the next.
Okay. So let me, let me set the stage for us, if you would, so that we've got actually three, three things to cover tonight, and I'm hoping one of them will be really fast. So we've got 6.04, we've got some stuff related to the UC section, and then we've got the entire rest of the charter. So this is your last chance, don't bring back anything we've already kind of voted up or down on. At our previous two workshops, we talked about a bunch of stuff, but is there anything that we've missed in the entire rest of the charter? This is your speak now or forever hold your peace moment, before the I do. All right, so we're now down to just two items, this 6.04, and then the UC, and I'd like to keep them separate if we can, so let's talk through this one first, and then we'll move on to the next one and talk about that at that time. So comments on 6.04, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, please.
I saw Vice Mayor first, go ahead. Go ahead, Jake, he's deferring to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm afraid we're going a little fast. You wanted to just discuss this one item, 6.04. Did that also include terms of the Utilities Commission Board members?
6.04 is the sale or lease of land. The terms of the Utility Commissioner, Utility Board members would be in the Utilities Commission section.
Okay.
Which we're going to talk about next, although, so we'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
Comments on 6.04? Vice Mayor.
Regarding that section, I like option two. Option two is okay, except I do not believe we can come up with a list of properties that we would actually all agree upon tonight. It's just not going to happen. I'm sure we all know what we have included, but it's just, we would miss something, or we would put the wrong thing in there. So I like option number two. It covers where the major properties are that the citizens would like us to hold on to. I agree that those properties should be held back. I don't know whether a public referendum, which could take up to two years to approve the sale of any property, is appropriate, but I do feel either a super, that a supermajority of the commissioners being necessary to sell such a property would be the most, not expeditious way, but the best way to operate in a business-like format for the city and protect these properties. It's, in my opinion, it's extremely important. We do set this method up and put it in our charter, goes right along with the preamble of the charter. I don't want to cause a problem for future committees, as if some unforeseen circumstance comes up, I don't want to see them have to wait two years to get an answer from the public, one way or the other. So those are my feelings on that.
So what I think I heard you say is you like, for 6.04, you like the second option, but with it being a supermajority of the commission rather than the voter referendum.
That is correct.
Okay. Other comments on 6.04?
I can support the Vice Mayor's thoughts on that. I think that's well thought through.
Okay.
And I disagree. I would like to see it go to a voter referendum. It does consume more time. The other concern is, yes, compiling a list of those sensitive bodies or sensitive lands would take time, and we were rushed. I'd also like us to consider the 800 acres of recharge area and the wells as part of those significant lands. We, you know, politics could get in the way, even with a four-fifth majority, a supermajority, and I would not want to ill-serve the public by having a commission that might do the wrong thing and sell vital lands that contain our watershed and our wells, so I would oppose that four-fifth majority and leave it to the public.
Okay. So two separate issues here, just for clarity, the 800 acres is part of the UC conversation we're going to have when we talk about the next section. What I think I heard you say was, you like 6.04, do you like the second option, but as is with the registered voters voting versus, there being a referendum versus a supermajority of the commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then you have concern over the 800, which we're going to talk about. Commissioner Hartman?
So I like consistency, and the UC's language says unanimous of the commission to sell properties. So I would be more in favor of it either being a unanimous vote or the voter referendum, so, rather than a supermajority. I mean, that way, we're consistent with what we've done elsewhere in the charter. I think that, I certainly wouldn't want to think that whoever the five are, you know, in years to come, they should all be on the same page if they're going to sell a piece of property that's next to a named body of water, or leave it up to the voters, so.
Okay.
Just my thoughts.
So if future commissions are as in sync as we are, we will never sell a piece of property in this. I don't care, you could require one commissioner to agree, and I don't think we can sell anything at this rate. All right, so we had one that liked it as is, but wanted a supermajority. Uh, so we had one that liked it as-is, but wanted a supermajority, one that agreed with that, one that says, I'll come back to you.
And I, I'm certainly flexible and can agree with the unanimous on the commission.
Okay.
Uh, yes, unanimous. Uh, I had thought we had, um, talked about not making it unanimous at our last workshop. I was for unanimous at the time, and I'm for it now.
Okay. So let me, I'll, I'll wade in to help add some clarity on where at least we have a few people. So, um, the, I, I tried to go back to the spirit of kind of where we landed here, you know, why we're even talking about this, and that was the Charter Review Committee brought up, you know, this is a concern, and this notion of elevating the standard, and we're going to talk about leasing next, but elevating the standard for when the, when the city divest itself of what could be, um, you know, amazing pieces of property, how do we go through that process and, you know, can any, can any given three people, uh, do that? And so, uh, that was the, the spirit of this, is just try to elevate that standard and say, listen, some, some pieces of property are worth a little more weight, I mean, that they're just, they carry a little more weight for this community. So, um, I like where we were headed with this notion of, here are these landmark properties, and the voters own these. No given commission own them. They transcend time and generation and any given commission. That being said, we were rushed. We weren't rushed by any fault of ours. We weren't rushed by any fault of anything. We are trying to accomplish a ton of things in a small amount of time. So, that has left us without the time to fully do this the right way for getting that list. So I would love to see us still work towards that for some future process. Um, that being said, for the, the present time, I can support the second option because it at least gives some protections. And with the unanimous, which I agree, the consistency with, uh, how other bodies do it, I think the unanimous gives us a lot of protection. I mean, and frankly, that mean, I mean, if this project can't get a unan- you know, if it doesn't, if it gets unanimous, it's got to be a decent project. It's got to be the decent thing to do. Um, you know, we, so, I'm comfortable, I can be very comfortable with that language, and that I think allows us to do something. And then we can always go back and try to curate this a little more in, in future versions of this on, in subsequent charter reviews, uh, if, if whatever commission's in power at that time so chooses. So, uh, that's, that's kind of where, that's where I land.
Mayor, because it, it is slated to be redone again in five years.
Correct.
So, I mean, this would give us the time, and if, if that's what we're looking forward to do now, then that gives us plenty of time to look at specific pieces of property. I have no idea all the pieces of property that we own.
Yeah.
And, you know, where, and where they would be. So, would they have to be in the charter, on the ballot, to list them all, or...
If, if you're going with option two, a named body of water, you would not have a list.
Okay.
But if we want to go option one, that's where we get the...
Okay.
Which, I tried to get us out of that, remember?
Right.
But we couldn't quite. Okay. So, I think we have at least four of us that are saying, second option, but with a super- or, uh, with a unanimous vote of this, of the city commission. And that's, I know we addressed this elsewhere in the charter, but that's unanimous of the full body, not just those present, not just a quorum. That's unanimous of the full body. Does everybody agree with that statement? Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify, it's the majority of the UC and unanimously of the city commission?
The UC has nothing to do with this one. This is just city-owned properties, this is like the Brandon Center we're sitting in. The UC is not a party to that at all. If the proposal was tonight for us to sell the Brandon Center, which is going to be the headline tomorrow, y'all wait. If that was the proposal tonight, it would take, per this language, it would take five of us to vote. The UC would have nothing to do with it.
That's not in the consideration for the UC.
That's, that's the next item we're about to talk about.
Fine.
So make a motion to accept six oh four, option number two, with unanimous vote of all commissioners?
Second.
Okay. Carrie, any other clarity you need on that? Any other...
That's crystal clear. I like it.
Okay. All right. I had a motion and a second. We'll just go ahead and call the roll on that, and then we'll move to the next item.
Commissioner Sax.
Hmm. No.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colley?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Thank you, Kelly. All right. Now, the next section. Carrie, go ahead.
The second part of this deals with the section on, with the Utilities Commission. Uh, when the Charter Review Commission looked at this, they did not recommend any changes to the, to the Utilities Commission section. Um, since they gave their recommendations to us, we've talked about it in a few city commission meetings, and I believe it was at the June ninth city commission meeting in Commissioner's comments, we talked about inviting the UC to our workshop so we could at least have a conversation about the provisions and address any questions. So on June eighteenth, we had a workshop, the, um, Joe Bunch and Tom Cloud were there, and three things were discussed. Um, one was there was language regarding terms of Utilities Commissioners beginning in nineteen seventy-five, um, just cleaning up that language and taking out those provisions, and I don't believe they had any objection to that. Um, the other one dealt with when the Utilities Commission submits their budget to the city commission. It currently says June one. We extended it to July one, which wasn't super important to the Utilities Commission, but they don't have an objection to that, so we included that. The third thing we talked about at the budget workshop was dealing with the UC sale of land provision, and so when we left there, there was direction to give it some clarity. And so Mr. Cloud and I went back and forth a few times. Again, this is a short timeline, so we didn't have a, a lot of time to go back and forth, so my staff report is not completely complete, as I'll address now. Um, so we went back and forth, didn't quite agree on, on language, and I was able to pull this history from two thousand and five, which showed that we had kind of gone down this road before, and it did not end well, it was not productive. So ultimately, where I believe we both ended up, and he can come up and speak to us, is that we've, we feel it's in the best interest to leave the existing language, and if, if we want to talk about the eight hundred acres, we could enter into an interlocal agreement, um, where both parties are consenting to how we deal with that. Um, that can come at a, it would be at a Utilities Commission meeting at, at one, at some point, and at a city commission meeting at some point. Um, so that is my recommendation for regarding the sale of land provision.
Okay. So, real quick on this one, before we dive in, um, because I, I feel like I was at least one that brought this to the, to the forefront, and to me, this all started as just a simple question to our city attorney, actually long before the charter review process. I think it was shortly after I got elected, we sat down and I said, hey, I've read the entire charter and just got a question. Um, so, this for me never was about, and still isn't about, any interest in taking or ceding power, negotiating any kind of a power thing with the Utilities Commission. Um, and I, I have since learned, you know, I, I knew there was obviously history, but I didn't quite understand some of it. So I've since learned that obviously it's been kicked around in this community for twenty-five years, per the, you know, the, the meeting minutes you sent over, um, the same question, which is, which is interesting. Um, but I just want to clarify on my part, um, not questioning any current leadership, not questioning current commissioners, uh, not doing this because there's anything on the horizon, you know, there's any like known plan that we're trying to, you know, circumvent or anything, that's, that wasn't it for me at all. Um, just asking a question, uh, and for me, that's a question that I actually haven't really gotten a great answer to, um, that aligns up with what I read in black and white. Um, so, but, you know, I, it's certainly, having learned some of the history, I feel like, again, we're trying to do a lot in a really, really short amount of time, so I'll, I'll save for the comments, but just, just so that's clear, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding about that, you know, how this came up or why it came up, or that we're trying to get out ahead of anything, or that I was trying to get out ahead of anything, at least, that's really not it. It was more just a simple question about, um, you know, what, what is the process, which is something we're trying to clarify in many different elements, uh, just like we are in leases that we're going to talk about next, so... Other, Carrie, go ahead.
And I just would, you know, if, if I've misrepresented anything, please feel free to come up and...
Okay.
Hit the thumbs up.
Other comments. Commissioner McGurk?
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, twenty-five years, and I think it goes way past that.
I think so.
It precedes, I think, all of us, um, this is a very difficult issue. It has a lot involved, and I don't think that at this time, we should continue with it. I think we should spend a lot more time on this. I think we should probably have some meetings, some workshops with our, uh, Utilities Commission, and I just think it's a really bad idea to try to force this through right now with a very limited amount of time we have. Uh, the Charter Review, uh, did not make any recommendations on it, so I don't think that there's any pressing issues, um, on their side that we need to address. Uh, so, you know, I would certainly recommend that we just not address the Utilities Commission in the charter, leave it as it is for now, and we can always address it when we can come up for air, have more time to spend on it, because I think it needs a lot more time.
And when you say not address it, just for clarity, I think we're all okay with the two Scribner-type things, cleaning up the old dates and that budget timeline, that I don't want to put words in your mouth. You're okay with...
Yeah. If, if the commission wants to, that's fine. I have no issue with that.
Other comments on this item?
So where I agree that the Charter Review Committee, thirteen citizens that we appointed, I know spoke about this two or three times, I know that we've spoken about it, and I think that the current language that's in there now is sufficient at this time. If we have some specifics, then I certainly like the interlocal agreement idea to proceed with that or look at that option, but to do anything other than the, the two things that I suggested, I think we should just leave it alone and go forward. I mean, I hate to lose a very good document over something that's been going on for twenty or thirty years, and nobody, I don't think, really knows why anymore it's been so long. So, it's kind of like the Hatfields and the McCoys, right? So, um, I would support the two, the date change on the commissioner's appointment and the, uh, budget thing, and then leave the rest of the language alone.
Okay. Other comments?
A question. Uh, assuming we do nothing related to the charter, which is what I'm leading to, uh, I just want to make a, I have a hypothetical that I would like to ask. If the Charter Commission, or, excuse me, if the Utility Commission came to us a year or two from now and wanted to sell off a piece of the, uh, large tract of land west of ninety-five, what would the procedure be and how would that come to pass? What would our involvement be?
Will it, Tom, speak to that? And Carrie, you can go in whichever order, y'all can...
I, I was just going to say that we've been talking about that for at least a year, and so he has always assured us we would be a part of that process. Obviously, one, declaring it surplus, two, what the plan would be for that property. Um, so we've had that conversation, that we would be a part of that, and if we wanted to formalize it, we have the option of entering into an interlocal agreement that would have those details.
Okay.
So conceivably, one second. If, uh, if they, uh, found that they had surplus property of ten thousand, or ten acres, I wish they had more, if they had ten acres, they could simply deed that to us.
Hmm.
Well, it was a purchased, or it was through eminent domain that they got the land, so, um, I'll let Tom jump in there.
Owned by the ratepayers, though, so we'd have to buy it, but...
Right. Uh, I think that, that we would be required to try and, and obtain fair market value for the ratepayers to be used for utility purposes. But to answer your question, I can tell you this, it is my intention and has been since I became general counsel of the Utilities Commission, to find a way to reach agreement on this acreage. That's why I proposed the interlocal agreement, a perpetual agreement, so that you never have to ask that question again as regards that acreage. And we are nowhere close to being able to know the answer of whether or not any of that is surplus. You have a significant amount of wetlands out there, nobody's going to let us touch that, and we have a significant amount of utility needs that we have to address, but more importantly, we view this, and I've talked to every one of the Utilities Commissioners, as a partnership. We have to work together, and that's why I am here to give you that assurance that we are going to work towards getting that agreement, and in the meantime, nothing's going to get transferred out there without consultation with the city, any more than we would grant an easement to Volusia County without first consulting the city about whether and where that easement should be.
Okay. Hey, I have no doubt that, that you would, uh, deal with the city, the Utility Commission in general. I don't have a problem with that. Um, I just like going back to the original purposes of buying that land and what the general residents felt, it was a recharge area, and we would move our treatment plants and do that type of thing, and I would, uh, hate to see that, uh, that thought, uh, dealt with in a bad way. I would like the city residents to know that we protected such lands as that. If you found that there was some lands that maybe, uh, weren't necessary for that, I would like to see them replaced somewhere else. So, as it stands right now, I don't think we're going to come to an agreement one way or the other that, uh, would make everybody happy, so I would like to see it stay as it is. Uh, I've read the many, many pages of review that have come down the line here. I'm comfortable that if we don't put it in the Charter Commission, uh, in the Charter Review, that nothing bad is going to happen at this point. So, uh, I'm willing to accept just the first two changes and, and not delve into the overriding issue at this time.
Okay. Mr. Sax, comments on this item?
So I hope not to be long, uh, but I have to be real, uh, Mr. Cloud, you, I'm sure you can hear me, I, I don't expect you to stand up, but there was some animosity created, like Commissioner McGurk has said, probably years before we were in diapers. I, I can't understand why, uh, possibly two fiefdoms fighting with each other, but the Utilities Commission was nominated by the commission at the time, so you would think that they would have been in sync. And, other than a mishap with, uh, a communications, uh, network that the Utilities Commission was trying to dive into, other than that, the only problems I saw historically was that divide between the UC possibly selling the eight hundred acres and the pub, some of the public knowing about it, not wanting to sell it. So now it comes to us. I'm, of course, concerned about the sale to develop that land, because from what I know, it is our recharge area. Yes, we do have wells along forty-four. I don't know what their quality is. I'm not sure I understand what class-two recharge area is, but it seems to be one of the few and only recharge areas that we have. And now there are considerations to connect Williamson Boulevard through it or adjacent to it and build on it, basically sell it off. Are, are these wise things to do for our public? Who gets to decide if these are surplus lands and not needed? Do we have another eight hundred acres somewhere else that would fill the bill? So that's why I'm very, still very concerned. I never wanted to get into the, uh, anxious animosity that, that I had seen before. We'd had joint meetings where we had discussed the sale of the land. I was relieved to hear that the board was not considering selling it at the time, they did not need the money, the price of land was not good, so they decided not to sell. But I need assurances that we use best practices if we decide to sell, and I'm, beside myself, trying to figure out what is the best way to handle it in the charter, to let the people decide. That's why I threw it out there. Should we use that eight hundred acres as these special lands, put it in our catalog of special lands to consider to save because of its value of potable water? Um, again, I, I'm at a loss to figure which of these options is going to protect this land the best.
Just a reminder, they do, Utilities Commission does have Resolution Number Two Ten, where they require a unanimous vote of their board members to dispose of any of that land, so, and those are members you all appoint.
Yes. And, and since, looking at those historic documents and the discussions that ensued, and also realizing that we are co-joint, we are co-owned... And since looking at those historic documents and the discussions that ensued, and also realizing that we are co-joint, we are co-owners, the city is named and the Utilities Commission is named, I wonder, is the ratepayer the real owner of the UC land? And can they autonomously decide to sell it without City Commission approval?
The one thing that Tom and I do agree on is if the UC sells land, that stays ratepayer money. So it's not, it doesn't come to the city of New Smyrna Beach. That is ratepayer money.
It's not the money I worry so much about, but the water. Just thought I'd throw those thoughts out there. I think it's important.
So a couple of thoughts to kind of build on what everyone has said. First, a big thanks to Carrie and Tom. Both have been working on this, a lot of extra hours to churn out a lot of options and present us with a lot of research and, you know, back and forth. And Carrie called me one night at, I don't know, eight o'clock at night, and I thought something must be on fire. And no, it was just she wanted to make sure we were on the same page on this and talk about the latest. So really, really appreciate the extra work by all the teams involved. So, you know, I said what I said at the beginning. I'll say this, out of respect, you know, I think current leadership of the UC, Joe, your entire team, the Commission, I think you're doing a good job. So I don't want to see us getting anywhere near what I saw in those past documents. That concerns me. So I would like to see this, I can support for tonight, leaving this unchanged. But, and I've said this to anyone that's asked, I do believe, you know, this has come up, as I said, several different times. This has been kicked around this community for 25-plus years now. That tells me something, isn't it? Like, we got to get on the same page on that. We've got to get it where it's a codified process, and this is where all the powers be. And I'm not saying that we, it's not a negotiation about the power, it's just a, here is, here is how it is. So, you know, the UC letter stated that this has come up multiple times over the years, and that tells me that I'm not the first person that's read our Charter and questioned, just like I did when I first read it, and asked Carrie, what is, you know, how would this work? And Commissioner or Vice Mayor Colode asked a very direct question, and the answer was good, but it wasn't direct. I mean, we never got the real, I mean, the answer is we come to the Commission. And why that matters is, it's great if we're on agreement. And I think for 99% of the time, hopefully, all of those bodies would be in agreement, because I put a lot of faith and trust in the leadership at the UC. And so if they bring us something, just like with their budgets, you know, it's really a, you know, I'm not in the weeds on that. I don't, I couldn't tell you all the stuff that Joe knows off the top of his head and that that Commission knows off the top of their head. But it's the, it's the one time when the entire body that's here, you come and you say, hey, here's our plan, and this entire body says, but we hate it. Then what happens? Then the rubber meets the road, and it's, does the UC go and do it anyway? And, you know, that's the point I want to try to avoid, or at least know exactly what's going to happen when that happens. Another thing I brought up is, we get that you need fair market value, but shouldn't the city at least get first right of refusal? It's in our backyard. It's maybe a neighboring building. Couldn't we at least get a first right of refusal clause somewhere in there? So I think for tonight, and where we're at, and how much we have tried to push through and get done, I don't want to see us push this and make a mistake and regress in any way, or cause further confusion or anything like that. So I'm comfortable, just like we talked about in Section 6, if you look at this Charter as a whole, this section included, from where we started six months ago when that Charter Review Commission first sat down, I think we've made a lot of progress. I think we've cleaned up a lot of things. I think we've added protections for residents. I think we've made a lot of progress. I don't want to see all that undermined by some last-minute thing we're trying to just cobble together, and we're not quite seeing eye to eye here. So if I've, you know, I would submit that I think there's still work to be done. I'd ask our attorneys to keep working on it. I would rather do it now when there's nothing on the horizon. That 800 acres is in the plan, and it is a long way away. Everything I'm seeing now is, you know, way away. So I'd rather talk about this now, sweat and peace, rather than to bleed in war. Let's figure it out while there's nothing on the horizon. So I think we owe ourselves that, because if not, it's going to keep coming up for the next 25 years, and I would just rather see us get away from that. But for tonight, I think, for tonight, I think we can resolve it. He wants us to as well. I think tonight we can just resolve it and move forward with it as is, and then we'll continue to work with City Attorney. And if it becomes a, an amendment to the Charter that we've taken enough time to cycle through and everyone's gotten on the same page, we can do that at some future cycle. If it's an interlocal agreement, even if it's just a memo that the two attorneys have said, this is the procedure, this is what we would follow, and in this case, this is how we would handle it. That's all I'm looking for. That's all I've been looking for really from the beginning. It isn't about trying to take power or give power, it's just about codifying where that power lies at the moment. So that's my, that's my thought. So I think I'm in broad agreement with what I heard out of Vice Mayor, I think, said that. I think Commissioner Hartman and McGurk said something similar. So I think we're in fairly broad agreement on that. Other, any other comments? Anything to add? If not, I'll take a motion on this section, remembering there's two provisions that we, I think everybody agreed we were okay with. UC was okay with both of those as well, right? Tom and Joe?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes, including what we're referring to as Items 1 and 2.
Okay.
Second.
For clarity, Items 1 and 2 is the changes on the dates and the changes on the date of the budget submission.
Correct.
Okay. Out of motion, out of second. City Attorney, are you okay? Do you need any other clarity?
No.
Okay. All right. If you would, call the role Kelly.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colode?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
The third and final item we need to formally act upon is the question regarding a single ballot question versus multiple ballot questions. I know we, in the workshop, we talked about a single ballot question, or you all talked about a single ballot question. We need to do that in a meeting, make sure everybody's on the same page.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you for the, those of you present from the Utilities Commission. Appreciate it.
Mayor, make a motion to approve a single ballot question to the voters on the Charter Review issue.
Second. Okay. And to be clear, we're still going to get a chance to see that language, right? This is just?
Yes. First reading would be July 28, 2020, when we do our setting the tentative millage or the maximum millage. And then the second reading and adoption would be the first meeting in August, which I believe is August 11.
Okay. So out of motion and a second comment? Go ahead.
Yes, I think we need some clarification. Again, I think we're rushing. I know it was the recommendation of the Review Committee to have a single ballot question for referendum. How would something like that be worded versus several items? I know that several items can sometimes provide clarity, sometimes make it more difficult. You know, you see 20 items and people just blank out. One item might make it easier, but then people might ask, what are we actually voting for? So isn't that something we need to discuss before we just carte blanche about yea or nay, thumbs up, thumbs down?
So a couple of things, and you keep saying we're rushing, and to some degree, I agree with you. We are rushing, not necessarily tonight, but just kind of in general, we've, you know, but we have had two full, you know, three-ish hour meetings where we talked through, you know, line by line of the Charter. And obviously, we had the recommendation provided to us by the Charter Review Committee. We're kind of out of time. Like, we have to get this to first and second rea, whatever we do, whether we do one question or a million questions, we've got to make that decision tonight so that we can go, so that the City Attorney could be drafting it, so that we can do, we've got, we've got to do a first and second reading of that. And we only have two meetings left, basically, to get that done. So that's, the impetus behind the rush is that this is it. We have to make a decision. Now, we can certainly have some more debate if you want to try to lobby some of your Commissioners on, you know, I think we talked about this at the very end of our last meeting a bit, on the one question versus many. I could go both ways. The, some of the downsides to many questions are, you know, ballot fatigue. People get to the very end and they just, you know, they tend to fall off. It's also an element of integration. You know, if they just pass the third question, and it happens to be some random section in the middle, you know, there's this question of, how do you make all that language fit together? The plus side is, if there's something that is considered controversial, let's say you thoroughly disagree with one thing, but you love everything else, you as a Commissioner or anybody in the public could then peel off and say, hey, I'm for ballot questions 1, 2, and 3, but not for 4. So that's the, that's the plus side is. It doesn't make it, you know, kind of this, this one-size-fits-all. As to far as what the specific language would be, that's where Carrie is going to work with probably the Elections people and others. We only have 75 words. So, you know, we'll have a chance to see that language. I'm sure she'll circulate it even before the meeting, and then we'll approve that on first and second reading coming up. I've never seen, you know, I've never crafted ballot language. I think we're all going to be figuring that out as we go. But there's, there's some standards. We can look at other, what other cities have done as far as what that language is. Obviously, if we do multiple questions, we'll have to have multiple ballot languages. We'll have to figure out what sections do you put, you know, how do you, how do you phrase that? I think, I think that adds some complexity. That's where I, you know, I went back and forth on it, honestly. So, anyway, hope, hope some of that adds some clarity. I think when we talked about it last time, I think it was, the consensus was, not consensus, but the majority thought that the one ballot question made more sense. Certainly saw the merits of multiple, but Charter Review had said they recommended one, and several of us felt the, felt the same way. But, so, give you back the floor.
I feel comfortable enough to wait and see the language and then vote.
So this is, the problem is, we, we're giving direction to, it's not, we're not necessarily approving the language tonight, just so we're clear. We're approving, giving Carrie direction of, is she drafting one question or is she drafting 10 questions?
Yes.
So that's all we're voting on tonight. We're not approving that actual ballot language tonight. We're just saying, we got to tell her something. I guess we could ask her to do both, but she's probably already overworked. And so I'd rather give her some clearer direction that we're going to do one question or multiple questions.
That's why I think we're rushing. And I, I don't see the necessity, yes, it's a 10-year period. I didn't see the necessity to have to rush a referendum ballot for this year, but the city decided to do that. I think it could have taken a little more consideration, but that's my feelings. But I'm willing to wait and see what kind of language is crafted.
I don't quite understand that last comment, but if you don't want to elaborate.
Do you want to have one up or down vote? I'm willing to see what?
No, I meant about the waiting 10 years, not doing a referendum this time.
Are we required to have a referendum vote for our Charter this year?
No.
That's the point.
Okay.
Just saying.
But the idea behind that, when I brought it up, was that this year's an election year, it's a presidential election year, you're going to get the most voters probably to the polls than you would any other time. So now would be the opportunity time to get a true feeling across the board, a consensus of majority of the voters in City New Smyrna Beach. We've been working on this for almost a year now, and so I think we charged the committee to have it done in a timely fashion, which they were accomplished. We've had two or three workshops now on our part, along with the UC. So I think that we've, we're to the point where, in order to get it on the ballot for this election cycle, we have to do something sooner than later. And I think that in order to give the majority of the voters the opportunity to say yes or no, we like it or don't, now's the time. It'd be reviewed again in another five years. So if those concerns, as we, as we go through this new Charter for the next five years, I'm sure we're going to find other things, and we can tweak those. We did a major overhaul of a Charter that's never really been completely redone. So now we're going to have a new, fresh Charter that you can read in some fashion that makes sense and it's not all over the place. And with that, and the experience over the next five years or six years, then we'll have an opportunity to say, oh, we really need to tweak this item, or we should tweak that item. And so, you know, we can go through that process or not go through that process. We may find that this thing's worked out just as great as it can be. But to delay this any longer, I think is just, it's just going to cause more confusion, and we've done a disservice to those 13 members who spent all those months working on this to try to have it ready by, in time to have it on a referendum for this election cycle.
Commissioner Hartman, would you agree that it might be a good reason to retain a Charter Review Committee to further study?
You voted to sunset them already, so we'd have to go through the whole process again.
Sorry, I didn't hear your last statement.
We've already sunsetted the Charter Review Committee, so you'd have to go through the whole process of reformulizing another one in order to have something done by August the 18th, because this has to be done by August 18th in order for it to be on the November ballot.
And there's nothing stopping us from, first of all, doing, I mean, we can have some, we can have something on every, every election cycle if we chose. We can form a Charter Review Committee any given Tuesday night. So, I mean, we're not, none of this precludes any of that. So to me, we asked for something. We've involved a tremendous amount of time and effort from citizens and staff to deliver on that, and we're right here at the precipice of pushing for that. And the, the race for perfection is never won. It's not going to be perfect. I don't care if we took the next five years and talked about it. We wouldn't get the perfect, the perfect document that met, you know, that every one of us thought was exactly, you know, there was a lot of things that I wanted to see different, but it's, it's the middle ground of us five and 13 Commissioners, you know, 13 citizens. So, you know, I, I don't know that time buys us much of anything, other than more debate on some of these items, and you end up with, you know, we're still not, it's still not perfect. It's still not something that any one of us says, yep, that's the exact document that I wanted to see. So, all right. Vice Mayor, you haven't spoken yet on this. Go ahead.
When we started down this long road, I had extreme doubts as to whether we would actually complete it in time to get it on the ballot. I'm amazed at how much work was put in by the Charter Committee, the number of their meetings, and the depth that they went through to come up with these ideas. I do support the one ballot question. If I had any doubts that this Charter did not meet the current feelings of this community regarding environmental protection and some of the things contained in the preamble, I might have considered having multiple ballot questions, but I don't. I think everybody's going to see that this is, first of all, it's putting everything, our house in order, and giving us directions on how to work for the next five years. I kind of suspect that if this is approved, that when five years rolls around, everybody's going to be happy. That's the way I want to look at it. So I think we're in good shape with one ballot question, and I think it'll be overwhelmingly, I hope it's overwhelmingly approved.
Okay. All right, we had a motion and a second. We've had a lot of discussion on this. City Clerk, free color roll, please.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And for clarity, that was to approve City Attorney to bring us back at our next meeting or whenever the appropriate meeting is. One ballot question, proposed language. I'm okay if you even have, if you want to give some nuances, like, hey, here's kind of option ABC or something like that, you know, however you, however you want to approach Okay, where are we at? Item C, many budget and city lease discussion. I know that's one agenda item. I want to do those separately. So we're going to start off with the budget. We're going to get all the way through the budget, which really has nothing to do with the leases unless you touch on something that I'm not anticipating. So we're going to talk through everything related to budget, get that proposal, and then we're going to talk about this, this lease item. So just keep that in mind, they're two separate issues. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a fun time of the year to go through the budgets. We have faced quite a few challenges. Obviously, we lost key personnel in the Finance Department. We lost Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director. Then we got hit by the COVID. We also have unfinished negotiation with the unions. So there's a lot of unknowns going through this budget, and I want to just take a minute to recognize the Finance Director and her staff for for their, it's unbelievable the amount of time that they put into this budget to get to this point. So Natalia and her staff, thank you very much for putting this budget together because it wasn't easy for us and for them as well. We tried to maintain the current mileage that we have today, which is the 3.7421. However, I just want to point out to the commission that the commission has the desire to do a salary study and increase the minimum wage to $15. The salary study was, was completed. Right now, it's under review by our HR director. However, this was not included in the budget. We have not included any items regarding whether the union negotiations or the salary study. The unfunded items, as I mentioned, we have $1.56 for the police officers as well that we promised that we will give it to them to make our police officers competitive with the surrounding cities in Volusia County. We're losing quite a few officers, such as other cities, to other agencies, whether it's within the county or outside the county. That is not included as well. I just want to point out as well to, we have to maintain the level of service that we're doing right now. It took us a while to get to this point and I hate to see us go down. So even though the current mileage is the 3.721, there is a lot of unfunded projects. We have two bridges, the Baracuda Bridge and the Fifth Streets Bridge. And after the presentation by Natalia, I want to go over that in a little bit details. Yesterday, we had to shut down Baracuda Bridge because of the depression there. We have put Flauvil Phil back in this void, but we cannot continue to do this. I mean, we, at some point, we just have to move forward. So I just want to point out that these things were not included in the budgets. We would like to see them in the budgets, but we have not included because otherwise we would be quite a bit higher than the 3.721. So with that, I will give it to Natalia to give you the presentation and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Collet. So we would ask to be very conservative with our budget because of course COVID-19 and it was not easy task, but we were able to come up with $72.1 million for fiscal 2021. And that's comparing to 79.1 last year. So that's about 9% decrease from fiscal 2020. So general fund proposed budget is $31.5 million comparing to fiscal 2020, 32, and it's decreased about 2%. So the city's 2020 tax roll increased 10% and basically increase will generate about $1.5 million in tax revenue. Fiscal proposed budget also includes $990,000 in capital improvements. And actually, that figure not quite correct. I should have added another one, so it will go higher a little bit. We have also several vacant positions, as you see on the screen, and our police department in, they need the most. They are, have eight positions currently not filled, seven sworn officers and one admin. We have IT support specialist, support complex, you see the list, and I need assistant. We also have, I believe, two or three vacant positions for directors, but they are expected to be filled this year, so I did not include them there. Police department also requesting two mental workers and two community service workers. And estimated cost is $176,000 and that includes benefits. So our taxable new construction added $175 million, which is very good amount. Later on, you will see we're actually second largest city for, for that, right after Daytona Beach. Also, we added half million in property value through annexations. And our CRA taxable value increased 11% and we about $327 million, which is increase from last year by $33 million. The good news is this year, we don't have increase for our insurance plans, meaning Florida healthcare. So we really need any dime we can save. So we were pleased when we heard the news. And our Blue Cross Blue Shield plan came with 5.2% increase. So this year has been really challenging for us all. We all know, we even don't know the full impact yet. So this budget was prepared without any increases for salary or wages. Last week, as Collet mentioned, we started negotiations with unions, three. And full impact unknown yet, but we think it will be around, if it will happen, $750,000. Also, as Collet mentioned, the increased wage of $15 per hour for phase one, for that we will need $290,000. And increase of hourly rate to by $1.56 for all sworn officers will add to $175,000. So this is a big amount and they are not budgeted at this point in time. So next few slides were provided by property appraisal office. So this shows how city's 2020 tax roll increases compared to other municipalities in Volusia County and we come to 8.4% as you see. Taxable value slide shows how our tax roll increases compares as well. On its taxable value, previous slide was just value. So this is 10%. And this is slide that shows construction for Volusia County and where we're at. We're on second place and it's about 180 million according to the slide. 87% of that or 157 is residential property and 13% or $23 million, it's in commercial. That was interesting slide, I decided to include that. So it's basically survey, survey was taken in April 2020 and shows how professionals in real estate, how they view what might happen with prices in real estate. And as you see, they basically very optimistic. They say that 37% of realtors don't expect home prices to fall and 72% they think that sellers will lower prices. And those who think that will change, that change will not be big. So that slide took me hours to do. It was a lot of calculation, go back and forth. So basically, this shows how our new dollars shows the breakdown. So annexations will bring us about $2,000. New construction, $623,000. Roll increase, which mean on existing tax roll, it's about $900,000. So million point five next year. So that money will be basically taken away by capital improvement projects, 1.5. And that what I mentioned previously, equipment replacement, 990. So in that total excludes all funds that not, that funded by other sources. So the cost of increasing minimum age or $15, $15 per hour, it's 290 as I previously mentioned, and that will require our mileage rate increase 0.673. Now, union negotiations, potential impact, $750,000. Mengeage rate, 0.1745. And that PD increase of $1.56 per hour, which total $175,000. Mengeage rate, 0.4, 0.5. So if all these initiatives will take place, our mileage required for next year will be So that shows our property taxes by what we have on our tax roll. So our general mileage right now, it's 3.721 and this proposed budget for 2021 was prepared based on that mileage. Also, as you see on the table, the mileage rate for our voted debt, what we call, it means taxpayers elected to have that on their bill, it's general obligation bonds 2005 and 2018. So our calculations show that percentage will be decreasing because taxable value went up. So as you see, our total mileage for the city would be 4.1321. And actually, property appraisal office released rollback rates. I want to say it was a few days ago, so I had to go back and change few slides because of that, but you see what they are now. And revenue, of course, estimated at 95% collection rate per Florida statue. So next few slides will show capital equipment request by department and all of these projects are funded currently, so they are in our budget. So I just go one by one very quick. IT requests $310,000. Police, 292. Fire, 68. Streets, Streets 115. Recreation, 55. Parks, 73. Building maintenance, 8,000. Public works, 45. And golf course, 22. Now, stormwater has 390 and we have few projects, very expensive, 950, but they're funded through by impact fees. So that would be our total for capital equipment citywide is $2,000,003,000. Now, these are capital improvements request, also funded for fiscal 21. Stormwater, 1.8. And as you see, there is, we already have, that item was discussed earlier on the budget. Building, 35. Airport, 3.5. With airport, I would like to make note, we were very successful with getting grants. So a lot of this will be funded through federal administration, FAA and FDOT. Capital projects, 2.9. And you see there is some property acquisitions we put on the list.
Natalia, just, just want to make sure that, that $2 million that we have for property acquisition, that will be coming off of transportation impact fee. And this is for what we talked about right there on Flagler. The intersection of Flagler and Peninsula. So it's not, doesn't mean that we're going to spend the 2 million, but this is just in the budget for that. And 750, that would be coming out of the building department fund. And that is in anticipation if we decide to buy that property corner at Ockner and
So continue, that fund 302. So totals, 3.6. And the biggest, you see our fifth street bridge replacement, Baracuda Bridge and Buena Vista Park. Again, it's all funded currently and included in budget.
Hold on, Natalia, go back to that one, please. Back when we submitted FEMA reimbursement due to hurricane damages from Matthews and Irma, we submitted the reimbursement for the replacement of Rocco Park. Yesterday, we received an email from the state asking us to, if we wanted to move forward with that project. It's estimated at the time, $292,000. When we took it to the commission for Rocco and Spyglass, the commission at the time, they decided not to proceed with the project and just demolish the pier. If we wanted to move forward with Rocco Park, we need to post advertisement on our city website in order to move forward. So if, if the commission wishes for us to move forward, we need to do that as, as soon as possible. So there is a 75, 25. So it was 75% by FEMA, 25% by the city.
It's for the pier, right?
Yes.
That's for Rocco?
This is for Rocco Park, yes.
Let's, let's get through the whole thing and then we'll come, come back if everybody's good.
And Marina, last but the least, $65,000. And so total is $12 million for capital improvements citywide. Now, this is a project that requested, but funds not available. So it's Smith Street Facility and Street Bay, total million dollars, 800 plus 200. And that slide shows citywide budget expenses. And you see that we really tried our best to come up with some savings and I think we accomplished that. It's 8.8% decrease from last year. All this detail is presented in your budget books, so you will be able to see where savings come from. And so it's, as I said, 8.83%. So summary, our next budget workshops will take place on July 28th. And I believe at the time, it will be, directors will be presenting their budgets. And then we go into, of course, have to get approval from the commission and trim notice goes in August and two public hearings in September 2020. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you to you and your team. As a reformed budget guy, I know how much work goes into just doing something like that. Takes 10 minutes to go through, but feels like a lifetime to compile, so we appreciate it. It was one, so first of all, I think this summary is important to note that this is just kind of our first glance. I mean, we, we just got, for the public, we just got this binder with, you know, a couple hundred pages of information three minutes before this meeting started. So this is our, we're all getting this together at the same time. So this is our first chance to now take this, digest it, ping staff with questions individually, working through Collet, of course. If we have questions, if we, I mean, as I flipped through it, I had things like, hey, what is this? What is that? So that's our chance to do that. And then we're going to have these public hearings that we have to, the July 28th is when we'll set that not to exceed rate. That says this will be the maximum. And then we'll go through those public hearings in, in Septem-, so, see, trim notice in August, but we're doing that in July, right?
There is a workshop too, Mayor, a whole day workshop in August 19th. It's not listed in here, but it's, that's as a plan.
Yeah.
And if the commission feels they need a more than a day, then we will have. But this right now, it's August 19th for a whole day workshop.
So I just wanted to be clear for everyone out there that we're not, you know, we're not going to have a lot of time to discuss this tonight. We're not going to get in-depth because we just got it. But we are definitely going to have those in-depth conversations as time goes on and we have time to digest it. I want to go back though, Collet, to something you brought up with Rocco. It sounded like we needed to make a, do you need direction on that now or do you just need direction on that coming?
The one on Rocco, if you could make a decision now, is this where we could proceed with our advertisement and try to get the funding on the FEMA.
And recap in 15 seconds exactly what you're asking for on that?
It's, basically, we asked for 292,000. That was the estimated construction cost for the repair and replacement of Rocco Park Pier. So in order for us to proceed with FEMA reimbursement, I need to get an approval to post the advertisement on our website. And I- And I guess they'll have to have it for fifteen days for the public to comment on. Our share would be twenty-five percent of two hundred and ninety-two thousand. So initially, the commission, they decided not to go for it. This was back, I guess, about four or five months ago. So if the commission wishes to continue, I need to get your authorization to advertise on our website, this advertisement for FEMA.
But that would be a change. That's not the thirty K contemplated here, right?
That's the theory was just before we got the call.
This thirty would go away and it would be replaced by, he said, twenty-five percent of two ninety, I think it was?
Yeah, two ninety-two.
So whatever that number is. Seventy-ish.
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy range, yeah.
Yep.
All right. So quick comments on this, acknowledging we're not solving all the budget issues tonight. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, related to the same item, there was two piers that were damaged. The other one was Spyglass. Is there any action on that or would those same conditions apply?
We have not heard back on Spyglass from FEMA. The only one we heard on is was Rocco Park.
Okay, I would like to.
There was an estimate for the Spyglass replacement at the time. I don't have the figure right with me now, but there was an estimate for both of them.
Okay, because I've had a lot of interest from the residents out there. And if we could do the same thing for Spyglass that we're doing for Rocco, I could certainly support that. Because a number of the residents out there have even expressed a willingness to contribute to the cost to do some repairs to open that up. So if you could look into that to see if those, that offer applies to Spyglass, I could certainly approve that.
What I heard, I have not, I cannot confirm, but what I heard that they could come up with fifty thousand dollars. I think the construction cost.
The residents, you mean?
Yes.
Fifty thousand, okay.
Fifty thousand for like their fundraising. But the construction cost was, I want to say in the four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand was significant amount.
Yeah, they were willing to accept a much less of a pier than there was before.
Yeah, okay. Other comments? I see your mask down, go ahead.
Yeah, there's actually, we had those two piers and then we had the one on Buena Vista Park, but that is, that doesn't get included in FEMA because it's.
That one did not have any damage from FEMA. That was damage as a result of use and right now we have.
Are you sure about that? We don't, we don't have an expert? Okay, so listen, Mike.
We have fine grants for that one.
Thank you. My two cents on that is, you know, our problem with the budget is the level of expectation and quality of life that people want. But we start not being able to even meet what was already existing. And yet we're talking about trying to get more. It's certainly a problem and a challenge and we're going to hear from it from the residents. So before we start having a wish list of what we want, I think we need to make sure we can take care of what we have. And I'll get more into that in future meetings about my thoughts on Barracuda and Yaklov Island Bridge. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I agree completely because I'm going to look at this budget very carefully. And if there's something that my people want in zone one and we can't afford it, that's it. We just can't afford it.
Yeah. So I want to get clarity though, because we got to give them, I think, a yea or nay on the Rocco tonight. Do we want to plus the direction? What are your wishes?
I certainly hope there's support on it and I think Vice Mayor is trying to see, was that a?
Spyglass isn't in front of us tonight. I don't think there's not.
Because of FEMA, there's no FEMA money. So clearly, I would ask the commission to move forward on Rocco Park.
One in favor?
Yes, Hartman.
Favor Commissioner Sax?
I'm willing to rebuild Rocco. I'd like to see verification that we actually own Spyglass though, before we go ever go forward on it.
So I think my thoughts are aligned with what some of my fellow commissioners have said. You know, it feels great to build Rocco back, but then, you know, you go, you go to Rocco and it's, you rarely see people there. I just, I feel like, we've talked about this with parks before, we, we have a lot of parks spread all over and especially with things like piers that go out in the water that get damaged by just time and nature and then eventually by hurricanes. You know, I just continually wonder if we might not be better off focusing all of our resources in a couple of really, really dynamic parks rather than spread all over in all these areas that are underutilized, frankly. And that's just anecdotal. I have no data that says it's underutilized, but I haven't got, my email inbox isn't blowing up on it. You know, I've gotten one person, I think, that asked about Rocco Park and so.
I mean, the only reason I brought it up because it's an opportunity to get some FEMA funding.
I hear you. No, I, this is, I'm not directing this at you. I'm directing this at my commission is, you know, we, we keep approving these things and I mean, there's other things on that list as well. You know, do we need a port and play surfacing at Buena Vista Park? I've been there, my kids have played on it. It's fine. I don't know that we need, so, yeah. I, I can support it, but I'll, I can support Rocco, I guess, if y'all think it's needed. But I question whether or not it's really used and whether or not that's where we need to spend our limited resources.
Mr. Mayor, I, my assumption is Mr. McGurk, Commissioner McGurk supports rebuilding Rocco because you believe a lot of people use it, enough people use it?
Well, put it this way, if we, if we choose not to rebuild it, you're going to hear from a lot of people. And this Islesburg, a lot of times feels neglected, feel like they're left out of most of the stuff. So I, and I agree with everything the mayor said. You know, we've got to look at parks, we've got to figure out what's not being used. We're going to have to prioritize. On the other hand, this gives something for people who are not anywhere near the middle of the city to be able to get access to a waterway and fish from. So, you know, and the problem is you don't hear about it now, but when you made the decision to move on and then all of a sudden they come pouring in. So I go back to, we got it, the amenities that we provided in the past need to be considered before we put amenities to the future, is my general feeling on it.
Thank you. And I have a major consideration. These are, these are niceties for recreation. My major consideration again this year is, I know it's been put on our budget, a traffic light for Fire Station Fifty. Can you show me where those expenditures are, please?
It's in this current budget.
Yeah, under.
This is a proposal for 2021.
You're saying where it's?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's already fully funded.
Thank you for clarifying that. Good.
Okay.
Oh, by the way, I just want to mention, Kyle, thank you for thinking about the fifteen dollars an hour. I think if we're going to recognize our staff, that's the best way to recognize them. It will rise all ships in our city if we raise their wage. We thank them so many times, but I think it's time that they have enough.
I included in the budget, Commissioner, so I just want to make sure that, I mean, I said that we needed to have that.
Yes, no, I know, I, something to consider.
We now know the impact of it from a dollars and cents standpoint. We know the impact of it from a goodwill standpoint. Now the question is, can we, can we fund it? Not just today, but that one is one of those that has a tail forever. So, because you can never, you can never go back. I can cut capital funding, I can't cut wages.
Can I ask a question now of our finance director? If you take an, do we have, like, we use an average benchmark price of a home and can we figure out how much it would cost that home to fund fifteen dollars an hour for employees?
Probably could, if I need more details. This time, be.
That would be good to know.
Of course.
Thank you.
On the twenty-eighth, Commissioner, what we'll do is we'll get you on each, on each item that it's unfunded, we could tell you what is the impact in terms of the mileage. And I think she showed it to one of the slides. It shows you about the impact on each house.
That bills that she has on one slide times whatever average home value you want to pick out of, you know, you can pick a property appraisal or you can say if the home is a three hundred thousand dollar home, there's your mileage rate impact for those items. So point zero six seven three times, pick your home value and that tells you how much that homeowner would pay for that fifteen dollars per hour.
I'll have to break out the calculator. Thank you.
Yeah, but we can, we can throw together a spreadsheet, I'm sure that does.
I checked it many times, trust me. Even before presentation.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Going back to the piers, I understand and I support applying for a grant for Rocco piers and then we can decide later on if we're actually going to fund it and do it. I would just like the manager to ask about Spyglass.
Yeah.
And if they're available, if they're willing to do that, that we apply for that also.
Okay.
That's, that's.
So just for, just for clarity, I think we should take a motion on that pier item. We don't need a mo, this isn't the whole budget, just for crystal clear, not the whole budget, but just on that one item, the direction that we're giving staff on that. So do we have a motion?
Yeah, move to approve the Rocco Park pier for, for this budget. Well.
Going forward with the.
Going for the 2021, right?
Going forward for FEMA grant application, right? Is that the?
Yeah, with the contingent upon the FEMA grant money being available for the 2021 budget.
Second.
So, good, does that give you all the language you need? Okay, had a second. Is that discussion? Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to ask the maker of the motion if he would consider applying for the grant for Spyglass Pier.
Add to that motion, applying for a FEMA grant for Spyglass.
Thank you.
Is that acceptable to the second or?
No.
It's not? Do I have a second to that amended motion?
Mayor, if I may just, it's not a FEMA grant. We submitted for FEMA reimbursement on hurricane damages, so it wasn't a grant. So I just want to make sure that it's not like something you apply for, we apply because of the damages and it was approved. So I'll go back to them on Spyglass.
Okay, clarify, it is not a FEMA grant, it is FEMA reimbursement for damages.
So had a, had a motion that includes both Rocco and Spyglass? I don't have a second for that motion.
I will second that.
I have a second for the motion. City Clerk, if you can call the role, please.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
Not until we find out the true ownership of Spyglass, no.
Just a, yeah, okay. So that's a no.
Mayor Ellen?
Yes.
Thank you.
I am curious what you, not for tonight, but at some future meeting when we talk about that, I'm curious what you, if there's debate over the ownership of Spyglass apparently. I don't know.
I remember the question came up in 2018 and it is a public right of way. It's at the end of the public right of way, so.
I could tell you that, Mayor.
All right. I don't, I don't need it tonight, honestly. I just want to make sure we address that at some point, so somebody can send us something. All right, next item, city lease discussion. And before we, before we jump off on, on that, just for clarity, we're not, to me, we're not deciding any specific leases tonight. That wasn't my, my point in asking for this. I don't believe the others that joined me in asking for it. That was the, the objective was to decide every lease from now until the end of time. Someone adjusts a lease that ends in 2034, we're not, I don't think we're that, we're not there yet. This to me was about, you know, we've had a few instances over the past two months where leases have come up. It's either a renewal or someone has approached us asking to lease property and there's been questions around how do we, you know, what's the process that we follow? Kind of like what we just talked about with the UC. So for me, this was about trying to help codify for us, for the public, for staff, here's the expectation that we should follow through. Then a second part of that is, Commissioner Hartman brought this up, I agree. As you look at some of these old leases that are coming forward that we just keep, we just keep renewing over the course of generations, you have a lease that was written in a different legal era and it has, you know, much different, you know, legal language in it than is common and accepted today. So there's this notion of how do we make sure those things are current and we have some of the basic legalese and provisions that we would want in a lease, things like addressing, you know, liability and who owns this and who does this and who's responsible for this. A lot of, a lot of our older leases are a bit vague on some of those things. So establishing some criteria for making sure that we're keeping everything current. So that's kind of kicking it off. There's, you know, staff's put together this flow chart that we'll walk through and then we'll kind of open it to the commission for some discussion on, again, I say we can use examples of things that have come before us, but I'm not trying to solve any specific lease tonight. We're not, to me, going to make any motions to accept or extend or reject or whatever any specific leases tonight. It's all about what is the process when these kind of things come at us or come at staff? How do we direct people? So with that, I'll open it for Kyle.
You have asked us on the previous city commission meeting to come up with some type of standard operation procedure for leases and sales. Right now, we have a process for the sale. We don't have a process for the lease to say that we have one. I have reached out to several cities in Volusia County and none of them have a specific process because they deal with each one in individual cases. So I prepared this flow chart just to help the discussion. So basically is you got a lease or you have a sale. So if you have a sale property, which we've done probably twice since I've been here, so either you have a direct sale or you have a public-private partnership. Direct sale, it could be two, two things happen to it. It could be just to do the highest price, which means you put an RFP, it'll be a direct bid and you have to have two appraisals and then you have city commission approval. If you have a criteria for development plan, which means you have to prepare the RFP, it would not be based on the highest price, but it would be based on some other criteria that the commission will actually put in the RFP and choose so. If you look at the leases, oh, I'm sorry, we'll go to the public-private partnership. Same thing, you have to develop an RFP for the development of either a build project or a private development. And normally what happened is in that particular case, I've seen them where they have a thirty year maximum, but then it revert back to the city afterwards. If you go to the, to the leases part, either you have a lease, right now we have for non nonprofits or private. If it's a nonprofit, you either have a long-term or a short-term lease. Now, we have not in the past put an RFP for a non-for-profit lease, that I recall. However, if you move to the private entity, you either have a current lease or you have a new lease. If you have a current lease, it's either going to be a long-term or it expired. If it does expire, then you have to renew it or you go for an RFP. Staff recommends if it's a long-term lease that expired, that we will go for an RFP. Now, if it's a new lease, then the staff is recommending that you will do a short-term lease, maximum ten years, and that would require a city commission approval. I just did this just to lead the discussion with the commission and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
The, the language in the bottom left corner about the.
Now, this is just me from dealing with leases in the past. I would say that they have to be responsible for the maintenance, ground maintenance, building, the AC, the plumbing, electrical and so forth. We had an incident with the garden club in the past where they are responsible for the maintenance of the parking lot, but they had an issue with the drainage and they couldn't fund that project, so the city commission actually paid for the drainage. It was about eleven thousand dollars. And then the insurance, they have to have their own insurance and name the city as additional insured. And then the third one, which happened from previous leases that we have, if we are going to have a lease with any private entity to actually make sure that in their bylaws, that they don't have any discrimination against age, sex, religion, national origin or race in their bylaws. And then the fourth one is the lease to be at fair market value. And that will be depend on the location of the facility, whether it's underwater or not and whether it's in the business district or not. And then obviously with every lease that we have, that we would require a city commission approval.
Okay. Thank you. So gentlemen, the big, I'm going to open it up, but just the big question for me, to me, the category that is the nuanced category is those. me, that, to me, the category that is the nuanced category is those non-for-profits, when they can say, listen, we add this value back to the community, you heard from some of them tonight, you know, how do you, how do you go out and put that to the highest and best bidder? And do we undercut and undermine some of these institutions around town that do a lot of other quantifiable good, but not necessarily, you know, to the best monetary gain of the city? All of the others, you know, if it's a private, private enterprise that is, you know, for-profit or something else like that, you know, I'm comfortable with what's been proposed here of having a process where we go to RFP, you know, very formal process to avoid, you know, so there's just full transparency on that, on that process. So, there's probably some nuances that'll come out in the discussion, but it's kind of, that to me is kind of the crux of the issue. So, Vice Mayor, I saw your hand first. You'll have to be quick to meet Vice Mayor, I'll just tell you. I try sometimes to intentionally look this way, even, but he's...
Well, the screen's up there, so you can't miss me.
I know, so he, I'm just, I'm not, he's fast, I'm not...
I saw the, the information provided by our staff regarding basically the boilerplate issues, and I like them, they're very good. I also read various nine leases we have, which looks like they were written in nine separate countries. So, we, we've got to move towards a uniform approach, as, as much for protection for the nonprofit organizations, as well as to remove the perception that we're not treating everybody equally. And I think one thing that, that might be added to the flow chart on the nonprofit side is, we should develop a criteria where we can take into account the, the benefit, the quantifiable benefits to the community, the grants they give, the scholarships, the community help, so that we can really put a value on what the property is and the value that the organization put in. Because if you just look at the surface costs, a dollar here, $25 a year there, it's, it's very hard to explain to our citizens that we're not giving the house away. I think it'd be very important for us to show how we've taken into account the intrinsic values that they do have to the community, partially for the longevity, but what they're doing now. Any leases that we do come up with in the future, and we really only have one that we're going to be talking about, is I would like those things basically taken into account, and I'm not in favor of any long-term leases. Our charter's not geared that way, or proposed changes. I would like to see five-year leases with five-year renewable provisions, and certainly a cost of living increase included in there, as well as the various boilerplate issues that have been presented to us. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments on this item? Only the Vice Mayor has an opinion on it.
Well, what, I brought this up is, is for that very reason, was, is so that we're consistent with all the language that we do. The, all, all the leases need to have certain aspects in it. Not necessarily all of them will have all of the things that the city attorney has, you know, shared with us, but certainly that we should have some consistency throughout on, on certain items. And I agree with, how do you put a value on the non-for-profits? So, we need to probably work on that matrix somehow, and figure out how do we do that in a fair and equitable way, and I certainly do support that. When I brought this up, it was never about throwing away old leases. I mean, or, somebody made that commitment, and I'm going to honor that commitment until I'm, I'm told I don't have to anymore. So, we'll go with that, but I think that the language, like you said, when you look at them, they're all over the place. And if we have, and I know it's too hard to really standardize all of them, but if we have some format that we follow through, you know, I, I think it's, it's going to be an improvement over time, and we certainly, I think it gives us better protection, as does the leasing, so, I support your, the city attorney's proposal that she put forth on the leases. I think it's all good language. I thank Chris for all the hard work that he's put into this, and so, I think we just should adopt this kind of as a format going forward.
Okay. So, so what, the, the one that I struggle with, so the one that I wanted to talk through is, you know, let's, let's take the, let's take one that doesn't, you know, isn't going to happen for 20 years, so we're not talking about anything today. But 20 years from now, some, some property comes up, you know, some, some organization's been in there for, you know, the past 20 years, and their lease is up, and they want to get back, they want to get back in that property, and you have two non-for-profits that bid for that same property. So, hey, well, we want in, and we're willing to pay twice what the other, what the other organization was paying. Now, all of a sudden, we're trying to sit up here and evaluate the merits of nonprofit A versus nonprofit B, or organization A versus organization B. That's where, and that matrix, I mean, it sounds great, but you try to develop a matrix that, you know, pits organization A, but, you know, this one helps boys and girls, and this one helps, you know, other boys and girls. How do you, how do you pick between those two? At that point, does it become the highest fair market value? Like, that, that's the, that's the struggle. And I don't know if we can solve it tonight, but just out of transparency, that's where I'm, that's what I'm struggling with.
My thought on that, at some point in the future, you're going to say, well, if there's truly that much interest in the property or the building, maybe we should just keep it ourselves and lease it out on a basis much like we do the Brannons, or any other sports complex, anything else that we do. Maybe that would be the time to have that discussion. Should we assume that that building and that property is city-owned, and we can go forward with scheduling, you know, rentals, or leases, or, you know, short, you know, whatever we do, it would be a rental basis, contractually, so that we can address those issues at that time? If there's that much interest in a property, you know, it may be cost-neutral or even cost-positive for us at some point, so...
Interesting. Okay.
And I guess the other question is that, that might come up. You know, you have leases where they build the building, and they sell, they build the building on a city property, so such as the Garden Club. So, what do you do when their leases expire?
Well, most of them, it would clarify, and I think even the Garden Clubs, it clarifies that that reverts back to the landowner.
No, it does, but I'm saying, what do you do if they want to continue their lease?
Yeah, I, yeah.
I guess I'll weigh in. I know we want something standard, we want something equitable, we want something fair. But the fact of the matter is, we're going to have to look at many of these nonprofit leases on a case-by-case basis. That's a great, that, that is a tech, city managers, manager just brought up a technical issue on why each one may be a case-by-case basis. We own the land, they own the building. That's a different situation than many other of the prob, of the issues of the lands we have. And I got to tell you, this comment that said, it's not a sweetheart lease, but a smart, it's not a sweetheart deal, but a smart deal. And I'm going to put some stock into the fact that something has historic value in this community. It's been done, it's been involved with locals forever, and I say locals, we all become locals eventually. Boat and Ski Club. I'm going to treat the Boat and Ski Club probably a little different than I'm going to treat the Chamber. I'm going to treat the Boat and Ski Club differently than I'm going to treat the Garden Club. And there's both personal reasons why I would weigh in on that, and then there's the issue of the building and the land, and who owns what. So, Commissioner Hartman was, I agree completely with this lease template in general, to get all the boilerplate issues out of the way. But the fact of the matter is, when we deal with these nonprofit leases, I don't think that we can create a standard template for them. There's going to be a lot of history and value based on what makes New Somerta unique. And, you know, you, the Boat and Ski Club has been here for a very long time, many different families have been part of it. I'm, I am not part of it, never been part of it, not even quite sure how you become part of it. But I still recognize that it has a tremendous amount of value in this community as it operates. And do I care about the highest and best use for that specific piece of property? Probably not. So, these are always going to be very difficult issues. We're not going to have a magic wand or a silver bullet to deal with nonprofit leases. So, I'm not personally looking for a template on exactly how to deal with them. We're probably going to have to deal with them by a case-by-case basis when the lease comes up. I have no problem with the five-year, with a five-year option to renew. So, we don't extend out decades. And each commission has the ability to be able to then have their own ability to weigh in on what they feel is important for a nonprofit.
Okay. That's good perspective. You haven't spoken on this item yet, go ahead.
Yes, I don't know, it's difficult to be equitable, but look at them differently. And I think we can do that, but it's almost an oxymoron. We have the Lions Club pays a dollar, the Chamber of Commerce pays, let me try and find the Chamber.
I think it's either a dollar, $25, or $10.
Right.
It's a de minimis amount.
And both are de minimis amounts. And they're all added value to the community historically, societal, societally. My biggest concern, and truly the only concern, is that if you are a private club, you do not discriminate against age, sex, religion, national origin, or race. And those are usually found in their bylaws, so when these clubs come to us to renew their leases, I would like to see their bylaws very clear in that statement, because these are public lands. I would like to see everybody have an opportunity in this city to become a member of these clubs if they so wish. So, is private club that may discriminate, that, that's private, yes, but private club that doesn't discriminate, is that an oxymoron? Then it wouldn't be private, right? Either way, I just want us to be fair and offer these clubs on city property to anybody who wants to be in one.
Okay.
The, the money value should be equitable. I know the fair market value is burdensome. Honestly, it is. You know, between $1 and, let's say, $2,400, that's burdensome, yes. So, we're going to have to find a way to make that equitable also. But I, I would like everybody to have an opportunity to be members of these clubs. Some of them you can, some of them you can't.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, that's, I mean, that's an interesting perspective on some of the, some of the non-for-profits that are, you know, the membership is, is, you know, discriminatory has, you know, I think how you're using that term is, if it's, if it's private and they control membership, you're, you're using that as a type discriminatory, I think, universally except the discriminatory is, certain folks can get in based on some criteria, usually something they can't control, age, sex, gender, national origin, something. So, you know, I think you should be careful with that language. The, but you know, if, if a club has a cap on membership, and, you know, average Joe, Commissioner McGurk, or me walks in and says, hey, I want to become a member, and by the way, just full disclosure, not a member of, don't think any organization up there. I had to check on the Chamber, but I'm not a member of that either, so, yeah, no, nothing up there. So, the, you know, you want to go be a member of the Boat and Ski Club, I think you heard when they presented, that they, they only accept so many, like, they have a capacity. So, you know, I don't know if the Garden Club does or not, so. We have a technical thing, we've got, we're about to run out of tape, so we've got to take about a two-minute, three-minute... All right, so we got to take a quick break, so we're going to, we're going to pause the meeting for a minute. I have to take a break as well, though, so, I'm going to take a few...